Aspires to empower all students to be global citizens who are effective communicators, analytical problem solvers, and savvy consumers of information. We propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice in demonstrating competency.
Just a preemptive congratulations to all of the middle school students and staff who will be walking the Walk for Hunger tomorrow. Nine mile walk from the school out to the neck and back. So, and they're close to, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they're close to their fundraising goal this year, and they're above it. All right? Awesome. So, hot off, oh.
Right. Great. So, next up, public comments. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. While the committee and/or administrators will not typically respond during public comment, the chair, the presiding officer of the meeting, may choose to if she seems it expeditious. Further, should the chair believe that an issue falls outside the purview of the school committee, she may request that a citizen direct it to the appropriate person or body so that the matter is given proper consideration. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and a total of 15 minutes overall. This is the only opportunity during this meeting for members of the public to comment. And should you comment, please state your name and street, and note this meeting is being recorded, and I will use a timer, as I have in the past, to keep on track. Are there any public comments?
School committee. Gary Champion, three Palomino Way, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I assume that later in tonight's meeting where you discuss warrant articles, this is not a public hearing, there's not going to be public discussion at that point. So, I'd like to make a comment on a citizen query. I timed this at three minutes. Here I go. Ipswich Town Council and another municipal law attorney have both confirmed that the citizen petition town meeting warrant article on model schools is not a mandate for the school committee. It cannot overrule the separation of powers between town meeting and the school committee, nor is the CP warrant article needed because the MSBA requires evaluation of model schools for new construction later in the MSBA process. That said, the article language, quote, "full consideration must be given," end quote, could be interpreted by the citizen petition signers and like-minded in-town school advocates as a mandate to the school committee if this passes at May town meeting. We anticipate an October 2025 town meeting warrant article on funding the MSBA feasibility study. That warrant article will be written by the MSBA. If the CP signers and like-minded in-town school advocates do not like the feasibility study article language, they may seek to vote down funding the MSBA feasibility study and remove Ipswich from the MSBA program. One outspoken in-town school organizer has publicly expressed doing that. You will recall the 2017 warrant article for an additional $250,000 in feasibility study funds for a consolidated school at Doian because so much money was spent on the failed consolidated school at the Winthrop and Bylick Park sites. The in-town school advocates wrongly interpreted town meeting not approving the use of stabilization funds as a mandate against a consolidated school at Doian. They publicly used this as a reason to vote no in 2018. They were completely disingenuous. Two model school advocates refused to acknowledge that Winthrop students would be stuck in an awful school an additional seven to 10 years. They refused to acknowledge that construction inflation over 17 to 10 years would eliminate model school savings. They refused to tell us where Winthrop school students, staff, faculty, bathrooms, cafeteria, gym, special needs, and all other school functions would go during Winthrop demolition and construction. They promote comparing two model school designs with one consolidated custom school design, which is disingenuous misinformation. This CP warrant article is destined for misinterpretation and abuse. In my opinion, the school committee should oppose the citizen petition warrant article because of potential manipulation, and the school committee should go forward in compliance with the MSBA process that Ipswich has been accepted into.
Thank you, Gary.
Aset.
Thanks. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. Right. Next up, community presentation, curriculum review cycle with Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Wagner.
Thank you. Do you think this is all okay?
Yep.
Thank you for inviting me to give this exciting presentation on the curriculum review cycle. I brought props to use. Don't worry, Dr. Blake, I won't get, you know, too heavy into it, but here to talk about our curriculum review. So, here are the questions I'll answer. What is a curriculum review cycle, and why do we have one? What is our district's curriculum review cycle, and how do we use it? What are the tangible outcomes of our curriculum review cycle? How do we know if it's working? And then a little time for Q and A. And nicely, this presentation will be followed up with one from a representative from our comprehensive health compass team, which is one of the teams I'll talk about who do the curriculum review. So, I'm going to start pretty state-level guidance, work my way down to what Ipswich does and how it works, and end with an example from previous years, and then hand it off to Gina Vivalacca, who's a school adjustment counselor at the middle school, and many, many other things, to talk about another example, which is with health. So, that's an overview of the presentation. So, what is the curriculum review cycle, and why do we have one? So, the state of Massachusetts publishes new standards. So, these are examples. So, here's the comprehensive health, and then as Gina's going to talk about, we have math, we have ELA, you get my point. There's one of these for every content area. And what these have are guiding, bless you, frameworks, which cover all the grades, they're sort of philosophies of that content area. And then they have, broken down by grade or grade band, skills and practices that students in that content area need to be able to do at the end of that year. So, this is important because what started happening in about 2013 or so is the state decided to revise all of the standards and frameworks. And from that point on, every year, a new content standard batch came out. And so, DESI said, okay, districts need to have a curriculum review plan so that when the new standards come out, you have a process in place to look at the new standards, to look at your current curriculum, to measure it up and see what the gaps are, and then have a team with lots of stakeholders, so admin, teachers, and guidance counselors, to decide what are you going to do? Are you going to adopt new curriculum? What's the process to vet it? Are you going to take what you have and improve it and revise it? Are you going to write your own? So, the state gave all this guidance and said, here you go. Here are the standards, here are the frameworks. They have a two-pager that my job unlikes and I talk about all the time, which is the guidance to curriculum review. And then districts were able to make their own. So, we actually started ours in 2018. I went on a tour of all the schools and gave teachers and guidance counselors a lot of candy and said, which we wouldn't do anymore because of the wellness policy, of course, the apples now. And we gave them the curriculum review cycle and got feedback. So, I'm not going to go too deeply into this one because it's past. This just serves to show, we've actually been doing this cycle for a while. So, we finished five years of it. And so, then we moved in 2023 into the next cycle. In a moment, I'll show you the one we're on now. And it continues in the same way. A lot of teachers refer to it as the waterfall chart. A content area starts at the top, year one. We'll talk about it in a minute, what that looks like, goes to year two, and all the way down to year five, and if needed, to year six, in this comprehensive review. That's the exact same for every different content area. So, okay. Here is the current curriculum review cycle. Here's how you read it. These are the years, we'll talk about that in a minute, of, they go this way. So, the first year's review, unpack and plan, a couple of years of develop and implement, and some assess and revise. This year's, only if we need it, we added it during COVID because some teams had a pause. So, here we are in '24, '25. These are our habits of mind. Some other districts call them a portrait of the graduate. They're skills that we focus on alongside the standards. So, this year, we didn't have anything in year one. We had a couple in develop and implement year two, comprehensive health being one of them, digital literacy being the other, English Language Arts moved down one, science moved down one. And each of these represents a different compass team. So, compass is a team of teachers, guidance counselors, overseen by myself, who do a very standard curriculum review process. So, here you can see I put the years in. So, you can picture at any given point during a month, there are all these are sort of like COGS, all these compass meetings happening, each in a different content area, overseen by me, but with different people in each one in addition to the school day. That's really important because what that shows is that when we come forward to you, like we did with illustrative math and Witten Wisdom and tonight with health, it means that that decision was made not at all just by me or Biden administrator. It is like that in some districts, but it's not here. It was made by this whole team of people who gave their feedback and went through this really pretty painstaking cycle to talk about it. And here's what this cycle looks like. So, I'm going to go over the cycle and then give an example. We'll probably talk about Witten Wisdom, which is the new ELA, elementary curriculum. So, when something's in year one of curriculum review, it's this big compass team, usually, I don't know, 10 to 12 people, different grades, sometimes different roles, you want a big team. And they have a really exciting job, which is to go, which is to go through the standards and to unpack them, which is a DESI term, which means to unpack them, to figure out what's there. And they make this inventory that's literally this giant spreadsheet, and they input all the standards, and there's tabs and color codes and all these things, and they start there. Then what they do is they take our current curriculum. Everybody brings what they know and talk to your colleagues, and we take that giant standards inventory, we call it, and we input in all our current curriculum so that by the end of year one, we can see what the gaps are. We can say, oh, okay, here's the standards, the state's saying we have to do this for each grade. Here's what we currently have. We're doing this really well. We're missing out on this entirely. And usually, year one pauses there. Next year goes to the next section of curriculum review, usually another really big team, that's K through 12. And then they continue their gap analysis. We'll see this with the health team. So, they'll say, okay, look at all of the things that we're missing. What are we going to do? Are we going to look at brand-new curriculum and bring it in? And if that's the case, the state says what we can look at. We can look at curriculum they vetted through a program called Curate, or we can look at a national program called Ed Reports. That's it. But that's a lot. So, we can look at those, or we can take what we already have, if it's still okay from the state, and we can improve it and revise it, or you can write your own. And if that's the choice, which it is in some of our content areas, there's a set format that we follow as a district that I'll show you in a bit. So, at the end of year two, and that's where our health compass committee is, they make a recommendation. So, you saw this, if you were here on the committee last year with the Witten Wisdom crew, who are elementary ELA, they got up and said, all right, we did this two-year review, here's what we did, we made our standards inventory, we did our gap analysis, we looked at these, vetted and approved by the state and nationally curriculum, we narrowed it down to three, we reviewed it, we did demos, we got samples, we went out and saw it taught in other school districts. And when all is said and done, this team of people, after two years, is making this recommendation. And that's what the health committee is going to do tonight, which is exciting and perfectly timed. So, then it moves on to year three. So, there's not a precedent for not taking the recommendation of the team. We might tweak it a little bit if needed, for whatever reason. But in year three, usually compass becomes a little smaller, so it goes down another step in the cycle, and we implement it. So, for example, with Witten Wisdom, that looked like bringing in a literacy coach. Taking on a new curriculum is a huge lift, and our teachers are doing an amazing job of it in the elementary level this year. And so, we bring in supports, we bring in professional development. Something we do that's specific to Ipswich are called learning cycles. I started these with administrators a number of years ago. At the middle and high school level, learning cycles happen across the year. They're the same groups of middle and high school teachers around a shared content or topic that meet together across the year. So, the last learning cycle, secondary, we had middle and high school, say, math teachers who want to talk about benchmark assessments, and that same group meets together. Or maybe it's social studies teachers and ELA teachers who want to talk about writing, and they meet together across the year. At the elementary level, we just had a learning cycle today. Winthrop and Doian teachers get together, so say it's the same grade-three team gets together, they're looking at a particular task or topic or module. Today, they were looking at report card standards for Witten Wisdom. So, that's a piece that happens in year three and four. So, again, it goes down, compass gets a little smaller because you don't need that much feedback at that point. Year five, you're really honing in on what are the, at that point, last things we really need to look at. So, for example, where we're at with illustrative math, which now we have K through eight, we were moving down the curriculum review a couple of years ago. We really needed to focus on our interventions and our support of students with disabilities, really fine-tuning the things we're looking at. So, it starts really big, this big team, reviews, make recommendations, implement it in the classroom. So, all of these compass groups are meeting across the year, submitting agendas, rotating through meetings, and we're following that through. So, all that begs the question, I think, what are the tangible outcomes? So, so far, in now year eight of curriculum review at the elementary level, I'm proud to say we've completely aligned curriculum, something I'm super proud of and very different than when I first started here almost 10 years ago. So, we all use Witten Wisdom, we all use illustrative math. We have, these are called, some more edu-battle fruit, UBDs are Understanding by Design. It's a style of writing curriculum. If compass is saying teachers will write it, nothing out there exists, and sometimes that happens because Massachusetts standards are very innovative. We decide we're going to write our own, they follow a particular format, teachers write them together during learning cycles in those shared teams, they're all published for teachers in a shared drive. So, we have that for science and social studies, visual arts, music, PE, and we hope health, and you'll hear about that health recommendation today. At the middle school, we have course-alike, standards-based curriculum written in this format, and for math, we use illustrative math. So, it goes up through grade eight, so again, all the same in the same courses. Teachers may choose to teach it a little differently, and that is absolutely fine. We all have our own flair. It's the assessments that are the same, the standards that are the same, the guiding questions that are the same. And at the high school, same thing. Last year, we finished writing all our curriculum in this UBD format. So, this year, the digital learning specialist and I are taking time to look over it all, to give feedback to teachers and program directors, and this will be amazing when two years down the road, we start up our NIASC. So, that's the New England Review Group that comes in every 10 years. You have to provide them with all your curriculum, and it has to be in an aligned format that's vetted through a curriculum review cycle. So, we have done all that, and that's something really to be proud of. Okay. Last question. How do we know our curriculum review cycle is working? Well, the first piece I look at is what an outside assessor, for lack of a better word, says. So, I'm sure you remember, we had the big Ipswich 10-year state review. This was a national organization that came in through DESI, and they issued a report in April 2022. I was so proud because they, although maybe they should have, it would have been fun, didn't interview me about curriculum review. They went out and they talked to teachers and administrators, and they looked at our documents, and they came back saying Ipswich has a clearly articulated review cycle and process, and a whole report about how it worked, and they were spot-on. So, I was super proud that we got that feedback and passed that section of the review. We also check in all the time with educators. They're the best source, aside from student learning and student assessment of how things are going. We do monthly exit tickets, which is like you finish a meeting, you fill out how, when to give your questions. We do that after every learning cycles round, and we do data review. So, I'm proud to share that this is the first year, too, thanks to our math and our literacy coaches, that we have common beginning, mid, and end-of-year assessments and regularly scheduled data meetings with coaches, where grade-level teams get together with the literacy and the math coaches and go over student data. That's an amazing step of progress. And the same thing in middle and high school. It's different there because there's more classes, especially at the high school level. It gets a little more tricky to meet with colleagues sometimes, but we have regular data review. For all these reasons, it shows me that our curriculum review cycle is working, and we should stick with it. So, I gave a couple of examples as we went along. I'm happy to give more if anyone has any particular, although I will say that the health presentation that's going to follow is the perfect timely example. They're through year two, so they're through their gap analysis, they're making their recommendation to this group and to administrators. Next year, hopefully, that recommendation will go into practice, will move to year three. I know there was a lot. Any questions?
Thank you for all that work that you put into that.
You're welcome.
And because it's definitely complicated.
It's complicated.
Or that you make it seem organized and, you know.
Thank you, Gina. I appreciate that.
Yeah. So, anyway, thank you for doing that and to getting the elementary school curriculum together. That's great. That's one of the things that we want, is to have everybody to get the same information.
Very proud of that. And that represents the work of many, many people, not just me. But it did, when I came, there was no such system in place, and so, it was important to learn how to put something in place that would work beyond me and beyond my role, and we have that, and it works.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I haven't, this is the first time I've seen anything around this, so there's a lot to digest. I think one of the things I'm curious to understand is how this process aligns with when the principals are putting together goals for the schools and how that aligns with like the district vision. Are there things where if we're looking at things in a way that obviously we want to be equitable about how we're treating programs, where are there places where we say, okay, we're meeting the standard here versus we need to elevate this because this is a goal or this is a district vision where we need to do more than just check the box?
It's a great question, lots of parts. I would say the first is about the school improvement goals and the strategy for district improvement. This is the how things happen. Those are the why and the goal setting. So, it begins often in the summer, sometimes at an admin retreat, sometimes before then with faculty, looking at data, and how we come in the fall and do the strategy for district improvement presentation. It aligns, and if you were to go back and look at this year's, the language of the curriculum review cycle, sorry, I'm going to go kind of, is in it. It talks about how we will finish reviewing and vetting health curriculum with the goal of making a recommendation. It talks about year one of Witten Wisdom and how we will support teachers with literacy coaches. It talks about how with illustrative math, we'll focus on tier-one and-two interventions. So, those are all there, and then they come into the school improvement plans. So, for that, Dr. Blake and I meet regularly with the principals, who work with their school councils, who then work with their faculties. So, all the pieces go together, and I would even say the next piece would be the budget. We have to make sure that, of course, what comes from the big district plan to the individual school improvement plans to the curriculum review cycle to the budget all match. So, it's a lot of conversations and a lot of meetings and a lot of awareness, and the document that this came from, this comprehensive district review report speaks to that really well. And again, it was something I was really proud of because we were interviewed a little bit, but it was more other people and them looking at evidence across the district, and they said, it matches this and this and this and this, they're not disparate. But that's a big part of all our jobs, frankly.
Thanks. Another question, too, and maybe this is what some of these charts are showing us in terms of like the years that you're tending to these things. But is there a scenario, how much visibility do you guys have into like the new health standards are going to be rolling out next year or in this year? Does he tell you that in advance?
Yes. DESI gives us the guidance of you have to have curriculum review and you have to follow the standards. And so, the comprehensive health, just for an example, came out in 2023. We've been waiting for that for a long time because they hadn't been done since 1999. Cell phones weren't even a thing. No such thing as digital literacy then, and so, we were ready. We brought it right into compass. DESI's perception, I don't think, is very nuanced around, take your time. They think once they give us the standards, we got to go. So, they put into place at their state level their own curriculum review. They published these, and then within about six months, they had published a guidebook of curriculum they embedded, which we then used in our review. So, it's a go.
I think what I was trying to drive at is like how far in advance of them rolling those standards out, like you were saying, they hadn't been updated in, we had said many, many years at that point, right? Was it six months before? Was it a year before? Like how much visibility do you have into when those standards are going to be coming down?
We know when they're coming, usually. The comprehensive health were supposed to be released right before COVID, and then it derailed everything, and then it didn't come back until 2023. But we had a committee in place, we had one all set up, and then it didn't come. So, I'm not hearing anything about new standards now that they've completed their review. What they've been doing lately, so for example, with digital literacy, which was at the top last year, which looks a little differently because it's pre-K through 12 in a different way, it's embedded more across content, so it happens in all the other content areas. They didn't release new standards, they released an appendix. And then we had to use the appendix to look at the standards and go back to the standards inventory. They tweaked things, and so, I think over time, we're going to see more of that. So, next year, there are not new math standards. We are not moving from IM or from our high school coursework. We're going to hone in, see how it's working, look at assessments with a big team of people, and probably focus more on interventions and coaching support. So, all that is a long way of saying, if I think I'm understanding your question, if the state was going to give us new standards again, we would know, I don't know, a year in advance, probably. They, the state does curriculum review. They put together a team, teachers and administrators and curriculum experts and academics, and we know they're doing that. They write it, they ask for public comment.
Public comment.
It's not a surprise.
Anybody else with questions?
Yeah, Tracy, thank you for coming tonight. Can you talk a little bit more about the effectiveness and how we know, how we know how we're doing? So, for example, like with science and with English, it's been in place for a couple of years. How do we see how our students are doing? Are they improving over where they were two, three years ago? How are we measuring that?
That's a great question. So, that depends on the grade. So, we have MCAS. So, when I do the MCAS presentation, I'm always interested, and that's just one measure. So, we have that. We also have, because of, science is typically an area where teachers and teams are writing their curriculum in this aligned format, part of it is evidence and assessment. So, teachers are using in course-alike subjects the same assessments, and then in those learning cycles, they get together and they look at, say, a science benchmark they just gave, how are students, they calibrate. At the elementary level, another important achievement is that now we have the common standard space report card. It used to be standard space, but different at each school, now it's all the same, which is great. So, there's lots of pieces for teachers to talk. And then in the more core content subjects like ELA and math, K through eight, there's standardized assessments, so whether it's I-Ready, you'll see it middle school, or AR, or DIBELS, or Haggerty sometimes at the elementary. These are the things. These are the things teachers are getting together and talking about. At the elementary level, that's where the coaches, the instructional coaches really step in. So for example, I was helping them today. They have their year end data meetings where the coaches are going to meet, say with all of grade three, show them the data, talk about it using a protocol, identify the growth and get ready to share that data on with the fourth grade teachers the following year. So there's different systems in place.
And what are the results you're seeing from that? I remember when we went through MCAS where there's great variation. So we didn't see trends in improvement. We saw both increases and decreases. So it's sort of hard to discern from that how we're doing.
Yeah.
Through the actual results, do you see quantitatively that students are improving because of the new curriculum?
It's typically, and the state even has published work about this, because their big push right now is science of reading curriculum and knowledge-based curriculum, they say, not the Cockens Readers Writers Workshop. That used to be very. So they've talked about how the first year of MCAS and even the second after the new curriculum, the scores tend to dip because it's a learning curve versus what we're seeing, say with illustrative math. If you remember, the MCAS scores, K through eight in particular in math, were up and up and up and up and up because we were far along in our curriculum review and implementation where students, say in fifth grade, had had it since kindergarten or first grade. So right after, and I predict next year, when we're looking at MCAS scores in the elementaries, they might dip because that's typically what happens. The curriculum's brand new, everybody's learning it, the kids haven't had the benefit of it all those years before, but I predict that science and math will keep going up.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Did you hear about kids trying not as hard on the MCAS because it's no longer graduation requirement?
I heard some of that anecdotally and I get it. I understand it. However, um, so everyone knows what Charlie's talking about. It's what Mr. Mitchell and I presented on a while ago, which is MCAS still a thing. Everybody takes it, but it doesn't count for graduation requirement. However, I think with this particular class of 10th graders, they've always tended to test really well. And the nice thing about MCAS is you can still qualify for the, say, the Adams Scholarship or for some other scholarships. So I talked to administrators about it and we didn't see a particularly different, you know, maybe kids said stuff a little differently, but when it comes to actually taking the test, and we'll see how it goes. But you know what? Truthfully, I would understand if the scores dipped a little bit in the 10th grade. We have very smart students. They know they don't need to do it to graduate, but I'm sure they care deeply.
Just curious.
We'll see. I don't know.
All right. Thank you. So I think we're ready to move on to the compass.
So they hand it over and I can find it up here for you if you want. You're welcome.
Fight nice.
I don't have a fiker, so you just do the here and next.
Hello, I'm Gina Bavelacqua and I'm the Adjustment Counselor at the Middle School. And I'm joined by Ryan Daly, our very sigma, he paid me to say that, health teacher at the middle school. And we're here on behalf of, let it begin. And we're here on behalf of the Comprehensive Health Compass Committee to make recommendations to adopt a new health curriculum for Ipswich Public Schools for next year. So our committee has undertaken a comprehensive data-driven review process, like Tracy just talked about, in the past two years to review the comprehensive health and physical education curriculum framework for Massachusetts, which is a mouthful. We are joined by a lot of other members as well who couldn't be here tonight, but may or may not pop in as well. So Whit Cardou, PE at Doyon, Anthony Falconieri, PE teacher at Winthrop, Mark Southam, who's PE at both Doyon and Winthrop, myself and Ryan, Allison Tivnan, a school counselor at the middle school, Ashley Hershey, the health teacher at the high school, Justine May, the school counseling director, and Christine McGinley, one of the PE teachers at the high school as well. So Tracy talked a lot about our process. We went through the whole curriculum review, the first two years that Tracy spoke about in her presentation. So our process has been very collaborative and thorough with multiple phases to ensure that we're selecting a curriculum that aligns with best practices, state standards, and the evolving needs of students. So some of the key steps included reviewing the standards and identifying gaps. So in year one, our committee conducted a standards inventory and identified gaps in the current curriculum. And we noted that the previous health standards were incredibly outdated, being from 1999. We unpacked standards to notice trends and shifts. So a number of the standards in the new frameworks have shifted from high school to middle and middle to elementary. So that's one shift that we've noticed. There's also a number of additional topics that were not included in past standards. So updated frameworks now incorporate essential and timely topics like mental health, social emotional learning, substance use prevention, such as vaping, which was not a word anywhere in the standards in 1999, digital safety and sexual health education. So these changes reflect the importance of equipping young people with the knowledge and skills to make informed and healthy decisions all of their lives. And these trends also emphasize the importance of dedicated health educators throughout our district. We also established criteria for high-quality curriculum. So we developed a rubric to evaluate the curriculum that we wanted to look at from the state based on evidence-based content, accessibility, engagement strategies, and adaptability to diverse learning styles. So as part of our curriculum vetting process, we did look at Desi's Comprehensive Health and Physical Education Curriculum Guide. So those were the state recommended curriculum. And we looked through, they had a guide with several different options and we, we reviewed what information they shared and then narrowed it down to ones that we really wanted to look more closely at. So we ended up choosing a handful to review ourselves in comparison with the high-quality criteria, high-quality curriculum criteria we had come up with. So we looked at Michigan Model, which was reviewed for video content and resources. Catch Health, which was evaluated for scope and sequence. Health Smart was examined for affordability and accessibility. Get Real was reviewed for sexual health education components. And then we had planned to review Second Step, but we actually eliminated that from consideration. It primarily focuses on social emotional learning and that was something that we didn't find large gaps in when we had done our gap analysis in year one. So we decided that we weren't going to look at Second Step after all. We used a scoring rubric that aligned with our criteria to narrow down our choices to two options. And then we participated in demos with each of the companies, along with Tracy and Amy Gregory. We looked at the Michigan Model. We found it to be thorough and well organized, but there were a lot of modifications that would be necessary to align with the curriculum. And we also reviewed a document from a local school district, actually Lynn Public Schools, where they had recommended they'd done their own gap analysis. They had been using Michigan Model previously to the new standards. And they reviewed Michigan Model and did a gap analysis with the new standards and had no longer recommended Michigan Model. So we had reviewed what they had put out there as well about Michigan Model. And Health Smart was the other option that we reviewed. And we gave a lot of strong positive feedback to Health Smart. It had a clean and concise layout, print-ready subplans, student journals. The lessons are very adaptable. And Amy Gregory had also consulted with the company regarding privacy policies and available formats that would integrate with Google Classroom, which is already used in the middle and high school health classes. Health Smart also demonstrated the most responsiveness during the review process. They were easy to get in touch with. Amy was able to meet with them several times to talk about any tech questions and privacy questions. They provided clear pricing and it is also widely used in Massachusetts, which was how we got to our next step where we ended up with the middle and high school committee members ended up observing Health Smart lessons in action at Newburyport Public Schools back in March. So based on all of our criteria and our rubric and demos, observations, all of those pieces that we've done over the past two years, our recommendation that we sent to district administrators back in March is Health Smart. And we chose, we know that no curriculum is perfect, but we did feel like Health Smart had the strongest alignment with Desi Health Standards. It's affordable. There are clear cost estimates and it's feasible to, it was feasible to include. It was very clear what we would need from them early on. It's in, there's an ease of implementation. There's pre-designed lesson plans. There's assessment tools. There's a lot of pieces that are already built into it that can be used and they're very adaptable that our teachers can update them as needed themselves as well, which was not true of all of the curriculum. And it's also been broadly adopted across Massachusetts, which is good to know. There were others that we had looked at that would have been very difficult to observe because we didn't have, we couldn't find other districts that were using some of the curriculum that were in Desi's guide. So we recognize that there are some challenges of where health would fit within the elementary school schedule. So some of our recommendations did include ensuring that health has a dedicated instructional time at the elementary school, given the number of health standards that are included in the new standards. And also exploring staffing solutions such as a shared health teacher across Doyon and Winthrop. To ensure successful implementation at all levels, we proposed finalizing pricing. There's a standard digital option in integrated digital formats. So there's a few different options that would work well, depending on how the teachers wanted to use them and how we wanted to integrate with Google Classroom. Providing professional development for teachers to implement the curriculum and considering an organization of a PLC over the summer for pacing guide development. And we did submit, thanks to Tracy, a paying grant proposal to fund the position of a licensed shared elementary school teacher. So in that, we acknowledge that in our own past, health courses in the elementary schools have been taught by PE teachers, school counselors, social workers, classroom teachers, even school nurses. And this is a shift where health coursework would be taught by a certified health teacher. This is in part because the school personnel and the roles that I just listed now more than ever do not have time in their schedules for this additional classroom instruction and to meet the health standards. So PE teachers have copious new PE standards that are included in this guide as well. Social workers and school counselors are busy supporting students in crisis or who need emotional and mental health support. Classroom teachers need to dedicate their time to the core subject areas. And our school nurses have lines of kids out their door, not just in flu season, but all day, every day, and do not have time to be going into the classes to teach health instruction. So our hope is that if our paying grant is funded, students would receive a standards-based, vertically-aligned, comprehensive health curriculum across all grade levels in the district. We appreciate your time and support to listen to this presentation, to hear our recommendations. And if you had questions or any, need any additional materials, we have, we have that lovely spreadsheet that Tracy talked about where you can review hundreds of standards if you'd like to. We have all kinds of things if there's anything that you would like us to send your way to help show our process in choosing Health Smart. And Ryan would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions?
I just have one. This was great. Thank you for bringing it forward tonight and joining us. Clearly well thought out. Love the recommendations. In terms of the piece just about the paying grant, because it's not in our budget, it goes with the paying grant, we don't know for sure that that would get approved. If it did not, have you talked about what a backup option would be for coverage or how to be able to accomplish this next year?
Yeah, I do know that our elementary members who are not here tonight have had lots of conversations with administrators too about where it would fit in the schedule.
Yeah.
The ideal is to fund it through the paying grant.
Sure.
But yes, like Gina is saying, the Compass Committee met with administrators, including myself. We have a full-day Compass session for each of the teams in March. And I think we have plans A, B, C, D, E, and F to see what we need to do. You know, we'll make it work. But ideally, and hopefully you can really see it through the work of this team, the standards are not all PE and they're not necessarily content that is appropriate, frankly, for a PE teacher to teach. They should be taught by a licensed health instructor. So long way of answering your question, we'll make work whatever happens. Just want to make it clear what the recommendation of the group is.
Great. It's helpful. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question related to that before you sit down? I think the other thing that came up when this came up during budget was if the position was filled, also what would that look like? And it sounded like there was still a lot of gray area around the challenges of fitting it in, even if we hired a teacher to fill the role. Has there been, maybe in that March meeting, that would, that's option A through F somewhere in terms of?
We actually have some sample schedules. And so at the time of that meeting, the school-based scheduling teams hadn't started up yet, but now they have. So we have multiple examples we've looked at. And in fact, the elementary team, Eric Oxford, who's the Student Services Director, and I signed up for a state conference where they will support us in scheduling the various demands of the different content areas. So we're much further along now, happy to say.
Others?
I guess, yeah, along that. So is it like how they have art once a week? They would have health once a week? Or have you not arrived at that answer yet?
There are various recommendations in the plans. It's looking, I mean, it depends on whether we get the position or not. Hopefully we do. And if we do, then it would run in the specials rotation alongside music and art and PE. And so it would probably be a once a week.
Okay. Yeah.
And if you did want to look at the standards too, there is, the way that they wrote them up this time, there's standards that are by grade two, standards that are by grade five, standards that are by grade eight. So like middle school is really clear. And then standards for like the high school of course as well, that the students have to take one semester of in high school. So there's a lot, when we talked about the shift to elementary school, there's a lot that they're making happen somewhere within the elementary school.
Important to note too, and thank you, Ryan, for being here. Ryan's the middle school health teacher. So he's inherited a whole wealth of standards that used to be covered at the high school level. So he has his UBDs, his templates that he's written himself. Now he has the Health Smart curriculum to address the gaps. But we have to make sure that students, when they're coming up from the elementary, are ready for that sixth grade threshold that's been designated by the state. Did you want to mention anything about your curriculum that you wanted to say?
I just echo what Tracy's saying. It's very comprehensive.
Ryan.
This is actually for the viewing audience.
A little thrown off. A little just for my daughter to bed.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
It's very comprehensive. So like Gina was saying and Tracy was saying, I think it's important that there is definitely a dedicated health professional at the elementary level. I'm not just saying that because I'm a health educator myself, but like my son's in elementary school and so this stuff is important to me. My daughter will be going through Ipswich Public Schools. So I think it's given a huge shift. I think it's important to have dedicated health educator at the elementary level.
So this is a great example. And the same is at the high school of where we have a licensed health educator teaching health, just like we would have a licensed, you know, whatever the content area teacher is teaching that content. So we need that at the elementary level as well because that's what the standards are showing us. The expertise needs to be and it's important to cover these subject areas well.
Sorry, one more question about the Health Smart curriculum. That's just for K through five? So it's not, it's not curriculum for middle and high?
No. Yes. Sorry. No, it's, it's actually K through 12.
Okay.
Yeah. So most of our students take health in ninth grade, but they could take it 10th, 11th, 12th. They only need one semester in high school. But it is K through 12, which is part of why we selected it too. We didn't really want to be looking at having one curriculum for younger students and then switching when they came up here. We wanted one that was, you know, already aligned and that they've done that already and have a scope and sequence to provide us. So it is, it would go straight through from K up to high school.
All right. If you said that and I missed it, thank you for clarifying.
All good? Thank you so much. It was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need the projector for anyone else or should I shut it off?
I don't believe so, right? I think if we can shut it down. Yeah, thank you. Okay. I don't believe she has a.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That I know of. All right. Next up, we have a presentation on Section 3A, Multi-Family Overlay District. And after the presentation, we can have dialogue and we'll vote on the town meeting warrant Article 18 to amend zoning bylaws. Sarah Player, the Select Board Representative to the 3A Task Force.
Hi, good evening.
That's only to project for the listening audience, not for us.
Okay. So I'm just, okay. Good evening. Thank you. Sarah Player, the Select Board, 3A Task Force. I have Tony Morad, Chair of the Planning Board and 3A Task Force member.
Sorry, just coming from the fog.
So I did just send, we came from, I came from a Select Board meeting. We did open, reopen the warrant. There was an administrative error. Reopened the warrant and amended the 3A bylaw. We had accidentally omitted Section H, the affordability piece, which is now back in there. It was in there in the fall. It is now formally back in there. It was in there in the fall. It is now formally back in there. It has not changed at all. It's the same bylaw that the town considered in the fall.
Actually, that piece of it did change, but that's why it was incorrect.
There was an amendment in the fall to add it, so it's in its final form for you tonight. So some of the changes that have happened since the town last looked at 3A was of course the Milton, the SJC decision that came down from Milton stating that it is lawful. And then recently, the regulations became permanent. So those are the two big changes. The other change that you'll see probably in the news as well, it would be, you know, the penalties continue to be added by the state. As early as, as recently as Bean Counting, where we were all there. Senator Tar was really clear that the goalpost for the penalties for communities who remain non-compliant continues to expand. So, you know, we knew about several, but things continue to move forward. The state is continuing to be really clear and firm with, with communities and discretionary funding that we get from the state. So one of the questions that we heard about at Bean Counting came from the tri board about, you know, MSBA funding. Senator Tar said, you know, the, at this point, MSBA funding is not at risk, but he again, you know, made the comment of the goalpost keeps moving. Which means the town needs to continue to consider and weigh the cost of both grants as well as low income loans. The other, I'm sorry, right. So the other comment that Senator Tar made was we just learned about the SRF funding, the state revolving funding that we have used for things like wastewater treatment plant. So we had been planning to apply for these low, zero to low interest grants. Those are now on the list of, of... And right, so if the town chooses in, at annual town meeting to move forward with the wastewater treatment plant for $35 million, we would no longer be eligible to apply for those low, low to zero interest rate loans from the state. So, you know, we continue, I think, I think we just need to kind of go into this kind of discussion, kind of eyes wide open, knowing what's at risk. Are there any questions about 3A? It hasn't changed since we looked at it last.
Not a question, just a comment about the MSBA funding.
Yes.
Because 3A is new, there are no districts that need to comply with 3A that are also in MSBA, that are going through the MSBA process. So it's less that we don't know, it's that it hasn't applied. And I will share for the group, my concern is that we might be the first because it's hitting us both at the same time where we did not pass last year and now we're in the MSBA process. We might be the example that would be used for the state.
And there was, just to be clear, when we, when the 3A Task Force submitted the action plan, it was, you know, we were a little...
We didn't, we didn't come out and promise that we would put this on the warrant for our spring town meeting because some people on the Select Board weren't sure that they wanted to do that, wanted to continue to wait. And so it was submitted with that omission and they came right back to us like two days later saying,
Yeah.
you were out of compliance. And exactly what happened in that interim is we had applied for a Green Works grant for $500,000 and it got pulled back from us. And then the Planning Department, the staff went back, reworked that action plan, putting in the fact that we were going to put the vote back on our spring town meeting. And then we became back in compliance until the next date, which is June 14th.
July 14th.
Sorry, July 14th, which is the next date of compliance. So we're in compliance until that unless...
Right.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
And so the question is, I know it's been talked about being unfunded, funded first, unfunded. And the state auditor has said that it is unfunded, but I just want to hear what your... I know there's a lot of discussion and it's hard to kind of figure out where that stands. So I just want to hear what your thoughts are.
Right, so there has been a lot of discussion on that. So she, there are communities that are pursuing that at this time. So we don't know what the resolution of that will be. To be clear, when, you know, some communities are taking a look at that unfunded mandate as was the community funded to do the work of pursuing 3A? We were funded. We did get grants. We got about, I think, 50,000, $75,000 for, to do the work.
To do that.
So...
So we were funded.
So we were funded to...
We were funded in January of 2023.
To pursue the 3A work, to get technical assistance from MAPC.
And that's what they, that's what they need by funded. And I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's uncommon for laws to be passed at the state legislature and be unfunded. Many times, they, the laws get passed and then they attach the funding.
To, to follow up, I think some folks also are concerned about the unfunded mandate, meaning if building happened in that area, what would happen with infrastructure? To be clear, if you were a private owner and you do any construction, you own the infrastructure changes that need to be happening. So at no time are private developers, does a town provide money for infrastructure changes. Now or then. Okay. So there, but to be clear, there are communities who are pursuing that in court.
Okay. So you'd said that we already received funds for 3A and what were those for?
We received $45,000, $45,000 for the rural community, something. I can get you the name of it. And then we got another, we got another, what did I say? Another $30,000.
From, I think it was a state one, it's called a one-stop grant. So that allowed the town to hire a consultant. We consulted with MAPC for technical assistance. So they helped us, their planning's at, their MAPC.
Metropolitan.
Yes, Metropolitan Area Planning Council. So they are planners who have, who help a variety of communities all over the state on their 3A work and other big planning work. So they came in and helped us write, you know, work with the zoning map. They helped us with rolling out our whole community engagement plan for 3A. So that was funded by the state.
They also helped us, they vetted some ideas. We, you know, we talked about going out to Route 1. We talked about, you know, different areas.
Right.
Really helped us vet out what that would look like, what the advantages, disadvantages.
Right. But in terms of, once it's 3A is accepted, then the state would not help fund anything?
But it's a zoning change. It's not a, it's not a construction. It's a zoning change.
Okay.
Any of the, any, I think what you're saying is like in infrastructure, roads, streets, bridges, that's a different, that's a different agency. One that we would probably not be eligible to apply for if we're not compliant with 3A. So, so the mandate and what they're talking about, that unfunded mandate is just to get the zoning. So it's like administrative to get the zoning, like Sarah said, consultative fees to get the zoning done, just to comply with the zoning. The funding, when it comes to zoning, does not ever include any sort of infrastructure. That, they don't do that. They, they'll send you to another agency, they'll send you to the DOT where you could apply for funding for bridges, you know, whatever, streets, roads, whatever. But it does not come from, it does not come from the zoning.
Okay. So the towns that are saying they're being unfunded, they're not receiving the funds that we did receive. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. That, I have no idea because we, I guess you'd have to, you, my advice is for you to do your own research on those communities. I don't...
I will rent them. I know that there was a letter from the state auditor about that and just trying to piece it all together.
But that doesn't apply to us because we were funded.
We're funded. And so that's what I mean. That's the funding that they're saying that they don't have. So it's not like this, okay, okay.
And there may be other communities who are pursuing different paths, but right now Ipswich has been, what we can say is Ipswich has been funded for our technical assistance
Okay.
for 3A.
Okay. And that's all the funding that we're looking to get from the state? That's it? That's... So we're, we're good in terms of like the funds we got?
We've already received those and we've done the technical work.
And we don't, we're not going to get anything else? Okay.
For, for the zoning change, no.
There's no reason, yeah.
What else? We, our zone, we feel like we have a compliant zoning package right now? We just have, the town just needs to, you know, consider it at town meeting.
Yeah. Just again, trying to do, wrap my brain around this. It's very confusing, not just for me. I, I'm sure it's confusing to other people. But when I looked at the, the local mandate law, says that if there is a mandate that's from the state that is pushed or, you know, applied to the, a town or a city, that at that time that the mandate is created, the fundings also have to be created at that same session. So it's not like we can have something and then have the funds attached to it later. It is...
I think ideally that is what they want to happen. And I think that it is not, it is not uncommon that laws get passed and then they attach the funding. The funding is there and the towns just have to apply for them and they would get them.
Okay. And we got them. And we got them. Okay.
Yep.
There was a lot of confusion on, you know, what does the funding, what does it fund?
Right.
It never funds infrastructure, never.
But to be clear, if you are a private developer and you are creating a development, public funding does not fund the infrastructure changes you do as a developer.
To your property.
To your property or your project. And those are some of the, through the regulations, through the planning board and the zoning board, that's where some of those, that's where they say, you know, you need to upgrade the water system because you've now, you're putting in all these units kind of thing. So that's where that conversation happens, at those regulatory boards.
Okay.
And that was really part of some of the reasoning behind going into the overlay districts that we did choose eventually, the downtown, because they already have all that infrastructure. We, you know, there's, there's water, the sewer lines, everything, everything is there. We're not, not building new streets. You know, if we had chosen, you know, across from Route 1, we'd be bringing out water. We would be building roads. But that's not what, what, when we vetted it all out, that's not what made sense. So that's why the, that's what was helpful, working with MAPC to vet all of that stuff out and why I think the task force, we feel like we came, you know, to, to the best scenario.
Right. And I think Ipswich again is different than other communities. We already have a downtown that's already set up for multi, for multi-family development. We already have zoning that's very similar to 3A. It's different than some of our neighboring communities that don't have a downtown, that don't already have infrastructure embedded in downtown, near their train station. So our, some of our neighboring communities are, are struggling with 3A in a different way than we are just because of their current zoning and their current layout of downtown right now.
Right.
So it's not, so 3A doesn't impact every community the same way.
Right.
So the conversation really is community-specific. And, you know, as, as Tony said, when we took a look at our current zoning and then we looked at the overlay, they're so similar. Everything is the same. It's the same height restrictions. It's the same setbacks. So, so it, we wanted it to make it as seamless, a transition to 3A. And again, as Tony reminded us, it's a, it's an overlay. So if you are a property owner in Ipswich, you can use our current zoning. And if 3A were to pass, or you could choose to use 3A, you can use either path. So we're not taking away the ability to use current zoning. We've chosen an overlay as a choice, as another option.
Right. For residents. Makes sense that it's town by town because our, our train just so happens to be the center of town, which has a lot of the infrastructure that you need as opposed to Rowley or...
Right.
I don't even know where that train station is, to be honest with you.
Right. And so that, some of those smart, I mean, the things that you're talking about, those kind of smart growth has already been established in town over the years. Our smart growth planning, you know, ideas have already been implemented in town. So Ipswich is kind of primed for 3A. So it's not a big lift.
Right.
Compared to other communities.
In some other communities, you, you know, they only have certain sections where you can build multifamily. Where, where we, that's where we are in downtown.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a different permitted use.
I have two more questions unless someone... The, I know, remove the special permit process. And one of the things that the special permit, what they look at is will the project benefit the town? And so I know without that, that determination, we don't have the control over the project that would be coming in. I mean, we're not able to say, oh, okay, this is where we're going with our town and this is what the charm, this is the X, Y, and Z. Do we think this project will benefit the town? We, we just won't be able to say, well, that's good and bad. I'm just saying, we're not, we don't have a say in that anymore with the 3A.
Actually.
Oh, okay.
Just really getting into the weeds here.
Sorry.
On zoning.
Sorry. I can just ask you, I can just ask.
Totally right. Everyone, everyone asked this question. It's just the delivery is long, so just hang on.
Sorry, guys.
The, so a special permit, a lot of towns will use a special permit to restrict, restrict building. In, in the town of Ipswich, we don't real, we don't, we've never used it that way. What we typically will do is when someone comes in and wants to build something, we will work with them. If it's a permitted use, you know, personally, whether I like it or don't like it, is not really in my purview as a planning board member because we have to adhere to the bylaws. If it's a permitted use, then it's a permitted use. And if we don't let them do, you know, build a permitted use, we run the risk of going to land court.
Right.
So the issue with a special permit is it is appealable. And we have landed in land court.
Okay.
Landed in land court when we've granted a special permit. We've landed in land court when we have denied a special permit. So it's not the, you know, end-all be-all. We always work with the developers and we will continue to do that. The difference between the, the special permit does have that ability to say, is it, is there a community benefit? But truly, if you're building multifamily homes and mixed use in our downtown, that in itself is a community benefit. So there's really no, there's really no reason to put them through that extra step. Also, the, the, the site plan review has 13 elements. From lighting to, you know, fencing, to all kinds of aesthetics. It also still has to fit within the character of the town. So there's a lot of elements in, in that, in the site plan review.
To follow up with that, some of the concerns that we heard from folks were, you know, how are the buildings going to look? Right? We, you know, we didn't want a big, people didn't want large kind of rectangular boxes in town. So we also created companion 3A design guidelines to kind of capture some of those design elements that, that Ipswich knows and loves. Things that impact the character and designs of neighborhoods. So we actually have design guidelines that will go before the design review board and the planning board for approval, for consideration.
Regulations, actually.
Right.
We're going to adopt them as regulations for this, for this essay plan.
And we tried to capture some of those concerns.
Thank you.
Do you have one more question?
You sure?
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns about 3A while we have our experts here? Anybody like to have any dialogue? Okay. If there is no further discussion, then I will...
Thank you both.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can entertain a motion to support Article 18. And I think it's probably best practice if whoever makes the motion moves to support an article, whether then you vote to actually support it or not, but move to support an article. And then you can say the article number and title that's in the warrant.
Are we doing that now or when we get to the...
We're going to do that now.
Articles. Oh, okay.
Since they were here, we're having a discussion.
So you're taking this one out of order from the rest of the articles that we're going to review?
Yes. Their motion.
I'm...
I know.
The article number, do I need the description?
Okay, so is there a motion to support Article 18, men zoning bylaws, add section, was that 95, Section 3A, multi-family overlay district?
So moved.
Second.
By Sasha, second by Jen. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in... Okay, um, all in favor? And opposed? Okay, uh, the motion passes, uh, one, two, three, five, one. Thank you very much for coming. Next, we are on to Dr. Blake's administrative report.
Yes, good evening. Um, my report is in your folder. Saturday, April 5th, I attended Bean Counting, uh, meeting with the Select Board and the FinCom. I had my monthly meeting with the Athletic Director to talk about spring sports season, the planned work for the summer. Provided the capital improvement plan, uh, the capital plan passes. We have a significant work being done in in the Athletic Department this summer. So we reviewed all of that and the the pricing. And then we also talked about the newly formed working group, uh, looking at athletic policy. Uh, the IEF held their monthly meeting, um, last Monday, April 7th. Steve Filosa, a familiar name in town, he's a former resident, IEF board member, and now the owner of To the Good, was the speaker. He talked about the important work that we're doing, uh, understanding the history of IEF, and gave us uh, some some pointers on having fundraising conversations out in the community. Our admin team meeting focus was last week was on the facilities position and the organization of job responsibilities. Custodians are now being supervised by the principals. When the new director is hired, that responsibility will be shared. We also discussed the educator evaluation rubric in preparation for the Ed eval meeting that took place the following day. Other topics included the I, the plan for the IT initiatives that are happening next week. While we have nobody in the buildings, the Memorial Day assemblies and the end of year staffing information, you know, around non-renewals, PTS, terminations and and hiring. Tom and I met with Brad to review the status of the whole facilities department, share, you know, any necessary information in terms of logins, schedules, uh, system controls. Brad's last day was on Friday. He left on very good terms. We have all of the information we need and been able to to manage any of the day-to-day operations thus far. Laura shared with the the file with me tonight. We have 28 applicants for the facilities director position. So we should be able to to have a a good pool. And we're going to, uh, Tom and I are going to start, uh, interviews hopefully next week and get that underway. Also met with the president and vice president of the IEA for our monthly meeting. Last week on Wednesday, John Mitchell, Peter Genolfi and I participated in the Ipswich Aware Meeting. That's a monthly meeting that I usually participate in, but they joined me this time to discuss the vaping issues at the middle and high school. The Ed eval committee met and we spent the entire session talking about the updated rubrics from DESI. We had been operating under the 2012 or 14 rubric. And it was a a discussion point during negotiations that we moved toward uh, the the most up-to-date version. And so we had agreed as a committee during negotiations to do that. And so we were able to wrap that up and that new rubric will be going into effect next year. I met with the two finalist candidates for the assistant principal position. And I'll be making a an offer after I discuss it with Adam and Scott. Friday morning, I met with other community leaders. We have a stakeholders group in town that meets about quarterly. We meet, this month, we met at Ascension Church. We break up into different different tables and different, uh, you know, um, topics. We we, there were groups focused on sustainability, housing, food insecurity. And then the table that I participated in was the new middle school program that we started in conjunction with the Ascension Church. We, there was a need that we I, we identified a while back. And so we started conversations with our EDP director, Alicia Mary. And uh, working with the church, we were able to to utilize some of their space, have some of their folks volunteer to help out. We hired one staff member through the EDP program and got that program launched earlier in the in the year, uh, the calendar year. The program is is really taking off. We've got over over 50 students that are attending regularly. And Alicia and I met on Monday just to to review the program and and some of the conversations that were happening at the at the meeting on Friday, just to make sure that we're we're all on the same page in how the program is supposed to work and and sort of the 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 overall structure of it. Because essentially, it's a, it's an extension of our extended day program, um, but for the middle school level. We're we're looking at how that program is going to function next year. We're, you know, we were able to offer it um, free of charge this time with with some grant funds that have become available um, and utilizing some of the EDP uh, funding that we have. But next year, I think we're going to need to to have some kind of a a fee attached to that. And we're trying to work out what that's going to look like. But we wanted to do a, if you will, a soft launch this year, and it's really taking off. There's there's clearly a need for it, so.
I just be free of that one. Is there any concern about um, a fee reducing participation or limiting the students that are?
We're we're working, we're working on that and to see what what that that me happy medium would be. I mean, parents have to sign their students up for it. It's not a, it's not just a drop-in. So um, you know, we're working through some of those concerns now. The the, in particular, the parents of the students going from fifth grade to sixth grade is is a lot of the target audience. And where there 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 is a fee for EDP now, I I we anticipate that won't be so bad.
Yeah, I think.
And it won't be as, it won't be as 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 significant as the as the tuition for EDP.
I I think it's a great program. I wouldn't want to. I wouldn't want anybody to not be able to attend because of funding.
Yep, yep. Admin team this week focused on the end of the year calendar, uh, the wellness policy, summer professional development, and an update from our student services, uh, director. Subcommittees that have been going on the last couple of weeks, elementary building project, the FEFFY's Policy Working Group, Policy and Communications. The North Shore Superintendent's and Special Ed Director Directors met at Danvers High School um, yesterday. We're continuing to to work and discuss just special education and the delivery of special education in in the region. Trying to find ways to um, continue to control costs and and maybe do some cost sharing, whether it be through transportation or programming. And and just trying to find efficiencies throughout the the special education system and how we can help support one another more closely. So we're we're making some some good progress on that. We also talked about um, the legislative concerns, because there's only so much that we can do with things locally and and we need legislative help to to support some of that work in terms of reimbursement for transportation, in terms of, you know, perhaps changing some of the 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 laws and regs around special education delivery and the uh, and and our workings with with DESI. So we're we're continuing to have those conversations and and, you know, we we're already, we're already seeing some of the benefit of it in that we're able to work with some of our local school districts around us for, uh, you know, some, you know, sharing of 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 students um, and tuition reimbursements. So that that's good. This morning, I did the Zoom interview uh, for the new Naresco project with Rick Mitchell and Sarah Coyle. It was, we were on for about, oh, I would say 50 minutes or so. I thought it went very well. Once it was, you know, downloaded, I sent it off to to Sarah and and they're going to do with with it whatever advertising they they plan on doing. Just calling out not necessarily what each project means, but more so how those projects are going to benefit the school district. And in particular, we focused on this building. So the things like the lighting, things like the the um, the uh, getting rid of the pneumatic controls for the heating and ventilation system in this building and get getting some, you know, uh, electronic controls and and what that means and and how that's been a problem uh, to date and all the different issues that we're facing. So it was a, I thought it was a a good conversation. So we'll see how that comes out in in the public. I have a monthly tech update earlier today with Keith and Amy. Reviewed all of the work that's to be done next week. We talked about their tech update, which they'll be coming to the school committee, um, either late May or early June. As well as some of the things that they're working on behind the scenes in terms of a data dashboard and and some other other pieces with the with the teachers. And then tomorrow, after school begins April vacation, I'll be working most of the week. So I'll be here probably Tuesday through Friday, and then I'll be taking the the week after that off.
Questions for Dr. Blake? Next up, Subcommittee Working Group and Liaison Reports, Budget.
Not met, no need.
I thought we talked about getting, like tasking your group with getting ahead of preparing for next year.
We've not met since then? Okay, I, okay, great.
I don't think we've met since then.
No.
I think Bean Counting.
Yeah.
It feels like it met. That was all about the budget.
Sure. We, so in that discussion, we responded to the request from Strategic Planning Committee for information about future overrides. The in order to get to a greater level of precision on what those overrides would be, we want to look at what our projected revenue or funds from the town, as well as what our protected or projected spend would be for the schools. There's more work to do there. So we didn't finish that and we're able to accomplish that in the discussion. What we got to as an alternative, and we feel like is at least a good interim approach and will continue to revise, is to look at what we've historically done for overrides. And so continuing with the trend of overrides every five years, this year, or this current override, we actually believe will will, we're still on track for it to last six years, but continue with every five years and with the dollar amounts being similar but escalated as we move them out to future years. So our recommendation was, uh, we projected two more overrides over the next 10 years. The first one was for 2.9 million. That would be in 2027 for the following year. And then the next one was 3.5 million in 2032 for the FY 33 school year. We'll continue to have conversations and Budget Subcommittee refine that. I think we're not done with the conversations of, do we want to continue to override every five years? Or do we want to take a different approach? Everything from how do we get away from them? How could we spread them out? Maybe we do them more frequent but really small dollar amounts that would be less of a burden. And so we'll continue those conversations. We felt where we landed was reasonable and consistent with what we've done in the past. We still want to be more aggressive about them, but we feel like we're in at least comfortable place in recommending that to the Strategic Planning Committee.
You're going to plan another meeting?
Oh, yeah. We won't, we won't stop.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fantastic. All right. Communications, a couple of things to discuss here. I'm going to start with the newsletter.
I'd love to. Uh, in your folder is the newsletter for April. As always, take a look at the topics. If there's specific updates, but in general, I want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with what's in there, the nature of the update that's included. For everybody at home, the first one is update on budget planning. So for the most part, and sort of here, we are done. As a reminder, the budget is 40.9 million, uh, highlighting meetings that we've had. And then it will go to the town in the May town meeting, all town meeting in May. Next one's on Ipswich Elementary School building update. We've talked about, we just want to keep talking about this and keep this at the forefront while there has not been much progress and actually no progress from the MSBA. We don't start till July. We've continued to meet. I will point out that in there are guiding principles. I think we talked about that later in our agenda, so maybe I'll just suggest hold and come back to that. We will talk about, we recommended guiding principles for the project, but we'll talk about that later this evening. But I did insert them here, should we agree to them? There is an update on the Naresco project. Well, it's specific, or while while it's a very specific um, item, a third of the project benefits are to the school. And so I felt because of the significance of it, including something here in the newsletter, would be appropriate. Keeping with the monthly update on uh, safety-related topics, there is one on no place for hate and our usual call to action for parents, families, how they can talk about it at home with their kids or find out more information, reinforcing what the teachers are already doing across all of our schools. Another update on uh, community discussions, we've, which we held as through April as like a test to try to see if we liked them. Curious on feedback if we want to continue this in May, but we have a placeholder here, assuming that we're going to. And then our normal roundup of activities, accomplishments, and then upcoming events. You can see it needs to be filled out, but our meetings in May. Any questions, comments, suggestions about anything that's in there?
Suggestion actually based on um, the community discussion we had this evening coming into here. Is there somewhere that we can just keep, like maybe along the bottom of the page as a friendly reminder? If um, people in the community or parents specifically have feedback that they'd like to provide to us, that they can write an email, just as, just if you have feedback, we welcome it and um, let us know.
We could just like right here. Say contact the school committee at.
Yeah, and just keep that, like, that goes in every newsletter.
Great. But while we're on that topic, I don't know if you had anything more to say, but is, I guess you were at both. I was at one, you were at this one. I would be supportive of continuing that.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, especially based on the that feedback as well. It's like opportunities for, you know, when we're, when it's Citizens Query, you know, you can't have the reciprocal conversation. So I think that there's certainly, you know, the more we do it, if it's one, even if it, both times it was one person that showed up and the feedback was extremely valuable and conversations were fruitful, so.
That's great. I would love to hit, get like, keep a record of what the the subject matter is or like what's going on. So eventually, like, I can hear what that person, you know, what their person's thoughts were. So maybe we could figure out a way of compiling that and then having a part of a meeting that we can discuss some things or like.
Might be tricky, just like with the open meeting, but like I'm thinking the feedback.
We could do that at no meeting.
Yeah, but like, for instance, like high level, like the the community member who came to the one that I was at, wanted to talk about wellness policy. I believe your person wanted to talk about athletics. So I think we could like probably just mention like the high level topic, but to get into the back and forth.
Right.
But in order to follow through with it, like, I think for me, I'll take that feedback back to the wellness committee. Luckily, you were there to hear the athletic feedback. You can bring that to your athletic working group. Um, I don't, thoughts on how else we can engage our group by still being mindful of open meeting?
I think if we treat it the same way we would treat prep for a meeting versus like, it's a an email that's delivered, that's informational and people are not replying all, that we could say here, you know, and maybe it's not via email, maybe it's a s- a live document that we create a folder for this and it just says, high level topic, this is what was presented this, you know. And I think we should keep people's names out of it to anonymize it. But that way, we know it's just a repository where people can go and look to it for reference. But there should be no, you know, dialogue or written back and forth around it.
I want, so, yeah, I think we could go about it that way to take out like us needing to do something. Like if it's just a standing item at our meeting. like if it's just a standing item at our meeting, if we just kind of.
Read out on it.
Yeah, just if you were there, say, I had one person come today and they talked about curriculum, I don't know, curriculum review, whatever it is, you know, or, and then if there's need to really deliberate on it, then you would say, hey, can we get it on agenda? This person brought this up, next meeting, let's dig into that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
I think that's good.
Okay.
Standing agenda item, just to like, you know, basic subject matter that was something.
Yeah.
Because I'm interested to know.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing, yes, continue the community forums. So the note that's in the newsletter stands of we'll continue in May. Okay. You had more, please keep going.
I had one comment. Does anybody else have anything to say first? Okay. And I don't know if I missed this last night, but I I think it's well-intended for the Naresco Project. It says revise responsible investment. I don't want it to read that the original proposal was irresponsible.
Okay.
I, I think.
You can take it out.
Yeah, I think I would, it's just cleaner if it's just the new Naresco Project and then we describe it underneath. Like, I get the intention, but I just don't want to.
Be flowery.
Yeah, pretty much.
Got it.
Thank you. All right, other comments on the newsletter?
Looks good.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Then in the folder is the, there's a FinCom booklet, Budget Overview. So this was something last year, I think Kate, as the chair, prepared. And then I was told about it, and I, not being on Budget Subcommittee, asked the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee to put something together. So we did review this at Communications Meeting last night and felt it covered what we needed to cover. But it it'll go out in the FinCom booklet.
Give everyone a minute with it. Already not in the room, there's three sections. There's the Budget Overview on sort of where we landed, but also what, a little bit of what went into it. There's an update on the Elementary School Building Project, very similar to actually what's in our news, been in our newsletters, and a section on the FEFFEs grant and the the grant funding, including the dollar amount from last year, which we anticipate to be similar for this year. Also, a link to the list of the grants there. It's a lot to read, so take a second with it. Or if you have any additional follow-up items or suggestions, edits, just send them, you can send them to me or make them in the document. When does that need to be finalized, Dana? Can you remind me, is it tomorrow it's getting, going to the printer?
Yeah, they.
Looks good for me.
Good.
All right, you got tonight with it.
Okay. Then we'll plan on sending out like, yeah, first thing tomorrow morning. Okay. Anything else for Communications? Oh, uh, sorry, I had one more in the newsletter. Just pull that up again. Oh, maybe, maybe it's taken out. Okay, never mind.
You have the Naresco letter separated? It's a later agenda item for us?
Yes.
Okay, yes, and those are the two items from Communications. I was going to bring up the Community Discussions. We discussed that already, so I'm good.
Oh, wait, sorry, I found it. It says on the website, you can find public engagement opportunities. Just where we don't have anything specific planned yet. I just don't want that to.
Yeah, let's take that out for now, and then when we do have them, we'll announce them. Yep.
Finish cleaning that up. All right, policy met, and we're going to present and review them at our next meeting, and then we're on track to finish up this year in time.
Two years in a row, huh?
On it, it's great. All right. FEFFEs Policy Working Group also met. I'll speak for Kate because you weren't there. And we had a very long, productive meeting, and I think have a lot of suggestions for a lot of questions that came up, tried to provide some clarity. I think Kate's plan was to discuss it further at our next meeting because we each have a couple little to-do items to clean up in our proposed policy and.
It'll be done this year, as planned.
Yeah. And then can always, you know, if new questions come up, we can address it, but this is like a, a big, a big.
Huge step forward.
Yeah, for sure. All right. Athletic Policy Working Group, have you guys set a date?
We are about to set a date.
Okay.
I have feedback about dates. I think we have two of them, so that we'll have at least two meetings before the end of the school year.
Oh, great, it's wonderful. Okay. Did I miss any subcommittees or working groups that have met? Have anything to report on?
Elementary, but you've got us later in the agenda, so we'll cover it there.
Okay, and then liaisons.
Oh, I did, yes, I met with the Pedestrian Bike Advisory Board. And I'm good, we're going to have, I'm going to ask to have them back at some point in the next couple of meetings or so. But there's a a program, Dr. Blake, that we could apply for. It's free, it's, I don't know if it's this, I'll, I forgot about talking about this tonight. But it's something that I can sit down with you and maybe Brian can join us. And once we're in this program, said program, then more grants come available to us. So that's just something we we talked about at the last meeting, so I'll talk to you more about that.
Safe fruits to school?
Yeah, but but there, there has to be all of the schools in.
We are.
All of the schools are in, okay.
And in fact, we're doing an audit. I met with.
Maybe it's not that, Dr. Blake. Let me get back to you, cancel whatever I just said.
Okay, all right.
I'll look and get back to you.
Actually, quick update for, were you finished?
I'm going on that audit too, yes, sorry.
For operations, we have not met, but we did talk last week or at the last meeting about inquiring about a rubric for how we address, how we vote, what we vote on for warrant articles. So I did reach out, and they came back to me and said, basically, they don't offer that because it's so specific to each town. So that doesn't help us, but that's also why I didn't schedule any follow-up or do anything, because we didn't get anything back. But I did try. So we could still figure that out. I don't think that that, just because they can't provide a template to us, doesn't mean that we can't draw something up that is applicable to what we typically see. So if that's something that people have an interest in doing, we can still do that. I'm looking at you because you're on operations. I think you raised it, okay. So maybe for next year.
Yeah. I have it on my long-term goal list, so that's great. Thanks for reaching out. All right, I E F?
Dr. Blake kind of touched upon I E F in his administrative report with Steve Filos's visits, so.
Awesome. Pain and TWIG, pain or TWIG?
Pain met, we had presentations for all the grants on Tuesday. What day? I don't know.
Wednesday was last, was it Tuesday?
We had FEFFEs on Tuesday.
It was great. It was, I mean, the presentations were amazing and, you know, all of the ideas are exciting and I'm, I look forward to, I hope actually, may not be able to make the meeting. We'll see, there, we have the doodle poll out for TBD on the voting meeting. But people are filling out the rubrics and it's cool. It's just, it went well.
Just adding on to that, this is my second year on pain, and it's so exciting to see the ideas that the school comes up with and the teachers that present them and all the good that's happening. Because as a student, you take it for granted, all the trips we do, the services we have, and you realize how much of the things that are the, probably the most impactful in the schools are not funded through the core budget, but are mostly enrichment through the pain grant. Every single thing that I look back at and say, wow, that was really great, has always been a pain grant. I, it's always, it's amazing, the work they do.
Awesome feedback, it's great.
The TWIG Committee meets May 6th in the afternoon.
Okay, awesome. Kate sent me a couple of updates. First off, I'll start with the Climate Resiliency Committee. They met Tuesday night. They're updating Naresco content on the town website to reflect any new information. And then we have our letter editor that, you know, they support us doing, which we'll review later in our meeting. And then Strategic Planning Committee update, met last night. And they have not pulled together a final report in time for the FinCom booklet. So they are trying to hit a deadline of May 9th to get it, whatever they're going to present posted to the town website in advance of the town meeting. And then there will likely be a brief update at town meeting with a few slides. The update.
I neglected to mention in the special acknowledgements, somebody just reminded me, since I missed the FEFFE meeting, that I attended the second grade play on Tuesday, and I continue to marvel at Ms. Fab's ability to corral those kids and get a really awesome, adorable product out of them. So forgive me for missing that, the special acknowledgement.
That is a worthy, worthy statement, for sure. All right, any other positions I missed? Okay.
Before we move on, I just want to go back for a second to my report. I understand that it wasn't in the folder, and Laura just indicated that it ended up in her spam folder along with some other stuff that was forwarded to her. So it was.
Okay, thank you.
It should have been in there yesterday. Sorry about that.
No worries, thanks.
All right. Charlie, we're ready for your high school student representative report.
Where to begin, where to begin? So multi-un trip, Boston, lots of fun. Well, we didn't get any awards, we came pretty close, we came pretty close. I was in UN Trade and Development, it was a blast. Trains, we made trains happen from the Seychelles to Myanmar. Trains were very big. I think there was Congress of Vienna, there was a whole war with that, Nixon versus Kennedy, kids had fun, kids loved it, which is always great to see. And it's sad, it's my last year. The next thing is, like Dr. Blake, I had the pleasure to go to the community stakeholders meeting because of my role on the Vashri Descension Church, and it was good to see all the community leaders and the teen drop-in center progressing. And then the only other thing is Senior Assassin is happening. So if you see kids wearing goggles around town acting silly, it's because of Senior Assassins. Do you guys know what that is? It's when, so kids pay $15, okay? All the seniors pay $15, it's in a pool, and you're randomly assigned. Oh, yeah, you're good.
This is not a school sanctioned activity, but it is very popular.
Very popular.
And it can't take place on school grounds.
Nope, not on school grounds.
And it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, so it's like nationwide. There was an article in the New York Times about it a while ago, but basically it's not school-related, but it's associated with the class. Kids pay $15 as like a fee, and you have water guns, and you're assigned a random target each week. And you can't be, can't be 30 minutes before school or 30 minutes after school ordering sports practices, ordering work. And you're assigned these targets, could be friend, could be foe. If you spray them with a water gun, and then you get them out. And whoever wins, whoever's the last person standing gets the prize pool, which is like $800 right now. And second place goes, the person with the most eliminations. So I mean, and there's videos posted of it. You can go on Instagram, look up Ipswich High School Senior Assassin. There are so much fucking reveals, like hitting the back of cars, like best friends going over, like sneak attack. So that's, yeah, I mean, it's, Zoomies has been empty for a reason. It's assassin season.
I can't get my senior psych students to do 30 minutes of work, but they'll lay underneath someone's car for three hours waiting.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's everywhere. People are waking up at like 4:30 to drive to somebody's house to catch them while they leave to go to their car. It's crazy. Ice Bucket Challenge, I don't know how many of you've heard about that, but Ice Bucket Challenge has been going around for mental health awareness, and I was wondering if Dr. Blake would be willing to do the Ice Bucket Challenge.
Not a chance.
Mr. Mitchell, will be, will be doing it for mental health awareness?
I have a fear of very cold water. I had a bad experience with it, so I would not do that.
But yeah, any other school committees, if you're interested in doing it? You recommend three people to do it. And then, I'm trying to think what else. The Culture Fest for the high schools coming up. Much different clubs presenting at that, which will be very fun. The Green Team, Global Languages Club, DEI will be presenting, and that should be coming Friday, R Block, tomorrow. Friday, R Block, or maybe after vacation, Friday, R Block, but it'll be happening. And then, kids are excited about break, obviously. And free trees will be distributed tomorrow for students after school for Green Team, for the Earth Day celebration. And I think the only other unfortunate news, I think this is my second-to-last meeting because the first and the 15th was the junior prom, and then I think we elect a new rep on the 5th. So this is my second-to-last meeting, and that's about it.
You're attending the junior prom?
Uh, I'm attending the junior prom, so I have a conflict with that.
You didn't say no because you had a school committee meeting?
I'm not going to say no because I have a school committee meeting. Yeah. Sorry, I can't go to junior prom with you, I have a school committee meeting.
I feel like you would say that.
If it was the FEFFEs or pain grant me, I might, I might say that.
Oh, well, thank you. We'll discuss further at our next meeting. Were you done? Because I have a question.
Oh, no.
I didn't know if you had more to say, okay. Any update on the rain garden?
Yes, the vendors have been contacted.
The rain garden?
The rain garden. The vendors have been contacted, we're waiting for the ground to soften up before we planted anything, make sure the spring was actually coming. So the spring is actually coming at long last. And we will be planning to do that after April break. So Green Team met, sketches for the garden, all the kids submitted ideas, and we're going to combine them into one. We reached out to local vendors from Wolf Hill to Corliss for gravel, for plants, and so it'll be coming together in May and June soon.
All right, awesome, thank you. So no Tom for the finance report. So we are on to vote on town meeting warrant articles and speaker assignments. So we have like 30 minutes allotted for this, and we're not that far off of, we don't have any agenda time. So a couple of things I just want to point out, like with the first article that we voted on, the motion should be a motion to support, and then you can actually vote to support or not when we take the vote. It was helpful at the Select Board warrant, when they were voting on the warrant, the town council was there. And she advised that the votes are linked to the articles as written, but also pointed out that if there's any reason to believe that motion language would change anyone's position on an article, that it would be an option to rat them. I'll point that out. And then we'll do, I think we'll, it'll make sense to go through the warrant, and then we'll do speaker assignments at the end. All right. So, open that guy up, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, before we jump in, can we have a quick reminder? I think we decided we were going to vote on everything but one, is that correct? Okay, and which one was it that we were?
It was number.
Zoning, was it zoning?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
We don't need to have speakers for everything.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we actually, we can talk about that after, but there's only two, three, four, I think, that we are really presenting on. Okay, so.
Should we be recording this on the control sheet?
I'm doing that. Yeah, so I just have a separate tab, and then I'll add it and then send it off.
Thank you.
No, I saw that you had put a different control sheet in, in the folder as well with all of the votes from the FinCom and, and Select Board in there.
Yeah, I asked Emily to send that along, so.
Okay.
We have.
Did you see that one?
Where is it?
Yeah, so I do it completely separate.
Okay. Then you'll put them in.
Yeah.
That's in the folder?
It is. It is.
But the whole town warrant is also in the folder, which is.
Yeah, I know. I have that. Control sheet is right under the warrant.
Oh, I see it there. Ten A.
Yeah. That's what I meant. Should, should I be recording in there? But I like that Laura is gonna do it.
There is ten A. There's also just one labeled control sheet. So it's all the way at the bottom that has, also has the FinCom votes in there.
Oh, yeah, there are two.
The ten A doesn't have the FinCom votes in case that's helpful to anybody.
Thank you. All right. So article one consent calendar. Is there opening up to, um, discussion on this item?
I move to approve article one consent calendar.
Second.
Move by Sasha, second by Jenny. Okay. Further discussion. I actually have one. Just want to point out that we had talked about, do we continue to accept compensation? Do we not? I think we can, voting on this, should we choose to make a change for that? We could still do that within our budget in the future. Is that correct? Right? I think you brought that up.
Yeah. That's right.
And just, I did look into it. It's, it's highly variable. It's different towns. Some towns have a very high compensation. Some towns have zero compensation. I know, right? So some of the data was a little old, which means they're probably making even more. But, um, anyways, it's something just we should keep our eye on. Okay. So, okay. Um, any further discussion? All right. All in favor? Okay. Six, zero, motion passes. Okay. Next up. Article two. Finance committee election. Um, gonna point out the other two boards, ratums.
Okay.
Yeah. Since we don't have a name, I would recommend we do rat.
So everybody good with ratum? Okay. Um, next up, um, municipal budget.
I move, we approve article three FY twenty twenty six municipal budget.
Second.
Okay. Move by Sasha, second by Jen. I'll let you second Jen. Further discussion. Okay. All in favor? Okay. Six, zero, motion passes. All right. Next up is the school budget.
I move to approve article four FY twenty twenty six, school budget.
Sorry, can I miss it? Can you say support instead of approve?
Sorry. Yes. I move to support article four FY twenty twenty six, school budget.
Second.
Move by Sasha, second by Jen. Further discussion. All in favor? Zero, motion passes. Um, Whittier budget.
I move to support article five FY twenty twenty six, Whittier regional high school budget.
Second.
Sasha, second by Haley. Further discussion. All in favor? Six, zero, passes. Six on Essex Tech.
I move to support article six FY twenty twenty six, Essex County Technical Institute budget.
Second.
By Sasha, second by Haley. Further discussion. All in favor? Six, zero, passes. Um, article seven.
Move to support article seven, transfer of FY twenty five appropriated budget funds to educational stabilization fund.
Second.
Get in there. All right. Second by, further discussion. All in favor? Uh, opposed? Abstaining? Okay. Um, so motion passes. Five, zero, one. Attention. Okay. Um, article eight, stabilization funding.
Move to support article eight, stabilization funding.
Second.
Move by Sasha, second by Haley. Further discussion. All in favor? Okay. It's, uh, six, zero, motion passes. Nine.
I move to support article nine, transfer funds for opioid abatement purposes.
Second.
By Sasha, second by Jen. Further discussion. All in favor? Six, zero, motion passes. Go ahead. Article ten.
I move to support article ten, to close unspent capital funds and transfer to capital staple stabilization.
Second.
By Sasha, second by Matt. Further discussion. All in favor? Six, zero, motion passes. Article eleven.
I move to support article eleven, reevaluation of real property, five year recertification for FY twenty six.
Second.
Move by Sasha, second by Haley. Further discussion. All in favor? Zero, passes. Anybody else? Wanna make a motion on twelve?
Oh, I didn't know you were, we were there yet. Are we, did we say we were going to vote on twelve?
Yeah.
I move to support article twelve, other post employment benefits funding.
Second.
By Sasha, second by Jen. Further discussion. All in favor? Six. Jenny, was your hand up? Sorry. Okay. Six, zero. Yep. Motion passes.
I move to support article thirteen, annual capital plan.
Second.
Move by Sasha, second by Haley. Further discussion. I just want to point out that I'm still leery of the initial and continued cost of the modular at Winthrop.
How could we handle that? I agree with you on that specific line item, but I support the rest of it.
Right.
Great timing. We could still, so I believe technically we can still approve this. It doesn't require us to spend that. So should we? I, I don't know. I don't know how we would move forward with that. Or it doesn't require us to spend that. It makes that money available. I don't know where we go from there though. I don't know enough about.
We go to article fourteen.
We'll skip it.
And come back to this when Dr. Blake comes in the room.
I, we could. I feel like we kind of have been, or I, I guess, let me just start with this. Is, I voiced some concern. I'm not like totally opposed. I'm concerned. It sounds like Sasha has concerns. Are there, is it just me and Sasha? Does anybody else straw poll here have any, looking for more information on that?
I have the same concerns about the modular building.
Okay. Right. So, yeah. So the question is, if we vote for this, that doesn't mean this is definitely earmarked for that. Right? Or is that, are we saying that that's what it has to?
It wouldn't require us to move forward with the modular if we approve this article.
Okay.
Though I think I'm unclear of how do we move forward then?
With this.
Like specifically, like how do we pursue that? Yeah, I guess.
Yeah. Something that, on the floor? I don't know how this whole thing.
I think it's different than the article. It's, so maybe.
And say something?
Can you amend it? Out of my depths here, but I feel like we could still vote to approve. Doesn't require that to proceed. And so I think just as a school committee with the administration, we could determine whether we do or don't want to proceed with it.
I share a similar understanding, I believe. So, um, yeah, I, it just falls in this, are we, are we trying to trend to decreasing our funding? And if that's the case, how does this fit into that plan? And again, I'm not an absolute no, but I'm, it makes me nervous that this is a cost that we will carry. I mean, not just the initial, the, the initial, the capital plan, but then moving forward. How is that going to fit in our budget? So, um, here he comes. I guess we can share the concern now and then vote. We were talking about you.
Great timing.
We're on the capital plan and yeah, several have expressed some continued questions and concerned about the funding of the modular building in future years. So we're wondering if we support the article, will there still be chance for continued dialogue before an action is taken on that specific item?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, we're, after town meeting, we're going to need to, to act on it.
How soon?
Relatively soon because we need to order it and have it, and try to have it on site by, you know, before school starts. So it's, have till the end of, town meeting is mid to end of May.
That's the thirteenth. We meet the fifteenth and town meeting is the thirteenth, I think. Election's the twentieth. So I know you're not here the first meeting in May. I would just, I think it would be helpful for me to see, like, I don't even know how we accomplish this, but what that looks like in future budgets, carrying it forward. Like, how do we?
I think Tom presented that, did he not?
Sixty something thousand a year going forward.
Right.
And I forget if that includes, um, utilities. I don't remember that part.
That was inclusive.
I think it did. But I think that was the lease and utilities, which I know it sounds like, ah, but we're like literally trying to, right, cut everything back. So could.
I mean, the, the issue is space. Space is at a, at a premium and there, we're flat out of space.
What about this as an idea? And this may be beyond the time that we're, should, this should come up, but instead of using it for kids, you use it for storage, like get a, like a container, whatever, a storage thing and just all the places that we have the storage stuck in the different corners of the buildings and use that? No.
We don't, we don't have storage stuck in.
That they were just like, cause I know I've seen like.
We've taken over closets for, for office space and counseling space. There, there is no space.
There's no space that's like now used for storage because there's no other place else to put it. It's stuck in a corner or something that we can alleviate that and not move the kids out? Okay.
We have, we have a storage shed out on, on the other, on the side of Winthrop already.
It's already been thought of. All right. Well, what information do other people need to kind of better understanding of this? I, I mean, I understand the need. I, I'm, it's the pickle it might put us in. So I'd love to hear from people what would be helpful.
I mean, I just, I, the way I came at it, I totally understand the budgetary issues that have been, you know, explained here. But, and I think we've talked about this before, right? I mean, the current preschoolers will likely graduate potentially from Winthrop. And so we have to make sure that this is a continued building that has viable learning environments. And, and I made, I think I made the example last time I was walking through the building and there was, you know, some, uh, you know, one on one receiving services under a stairwell. Right? And every time someone walked by, the kid's spinning his head around, right? It's just not a conducive environment for that kind of thing. And, and, and maybe, I don't know if, if this, the, the only thing that gave me some pause was this expanded preschool down at the Y and whether or not that would affect our numbers and, and is there a plan B? If, if that turns out to be different to shift kids or would it be just for the preschool?
The, the plan is, is, is for the preschool so that we would have the, the design and thought processes that it would, it would be pre, two preschool classrooms so that we could keep, we, we wouldn't have to split up a grade. We have two preschool classrooms now. And we would move them there. As opposed to a, say a, a second or third grade where you would have two in the main building or one in the main building and two out.
Outside.
Outside. Yeah. So that was.
And then from bringing the preschoolers into the modular, you would free up a classroom for services?
Two.
Two classrooms for services. Cause we don't want services delivered in the modular.
Right.
I mean, we have, we, we don't have conference room space over there. We're doing that out in the White House. Where we're also doing music lessons and, and, you know, music classes and lessons. And that's where, where special education, uh, has their offices. There's, there's just, we, we wouldn't be doing this if we didn't need to. Believe me, I don't want to, I would rather spend that money on something else.
Yeah.
But I think, I see this as a, as a critical need for the system.
Yeah.
I'm support, I'm fully supportive of the intention. I think the way I'm thinking about it from a budget perspective, it's hard for us to be adding to the budget in future years is that this would be a trade off. So it's sixty four thousand dollars for this. That's got to come from someplace else. So we would be committing saying, we'd rather spend that sixty four here, but it's not totally clear to me where that would come from. And that's my concern. Plus it's a reduction. So that's my hesitation. I fully agree with the intention. We're trading this for something else. And I don't know what that something else is and that worries me just a little bit.
Worded what I was looking for much better. That's exactly what I would like to understand.
In terms of the pickle?
Yes.
And I don't know that that we'll know that answer. I mean, we, we, we build the budget every year based on the current, on the current needs. So I, I couldn't tell you right this minute, nor will I be able to tell you in May that we're going to cut X in order to support that. I, I don't have that.
Yeah.
We, we, we don't have that information now. It's going to be when we build next year's budget, the FY twenty seven budget, that we'll, we'll look and, and see where, where that can, can come from. You know, I mean, the other, the other pieces, maybe, I, I don't know the, this definitively, but possibly it could be offset by the preschool revolving fund.
That's interesting.
So there's, there are other ways to, to fund it without reducing the budget.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I think that this not only would create more space, but as Matt was saying, you're having, there's a service that's being provided to a child that's in a very, an area that's very distracting. So those services would have more of an impact if there is a dedicated space as there should be.
I mean, if I can.
There's also a compliance issue there too. I mean, they should, we could be cited for that. So. What about, um, if we were to keep this in the budget, but discuss after town meeting, an option? What gets me is the two hundred and forty thousand dollars for it and not so much the sixty thousand every year. And this might be too out there, but for sixty thousand dollars a year, like have we looked into where they used to do the kindergarten evaluation in the bottom of the church? On the same, like one block over?
We, we have, yep. Yep. We have.
Just for the preschool?
So we have, we have talked about that. And that means moving, moving the preschool programs potentially, or another program. That means moving staff around, having staff, having to travel between buildings. That brings up another whole host of issues that we'd have to, to deal with. Whereas it, it's easier if we have them right on site.
What's like the cost comparison for that though? Like is it, you know, half as much as it would normally be? Or is it similar enough where it just makes sense to have it at Winthrop?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Like, you know, like, let's say it costs thirty thousand theoretically to rent out the bottom of the church a block away every single year. I mean, that would be a significant reduction in, in price. Or if it's more of like, it's fifty thousand dollars and it's comparable enough to a new building.
We didn't, I didn't do a cost comparison on that.
Okay.
So is this something that we could vote on tonight with it in there and then think about and come back with the more info, like whatever we think we need to make that decision, whether we're going to use that money for that or come up with another solution? But is, is it for tonight? Are we able to vote on it with it in there? I mean, that we'll talk about it or no? Yes, I think it's.
I was thinking about this more. We could vote on it, still decide not to actually spend it.
Yeah.
Voting on it makes the money available, doesn't commit us to it.
Okay.
We could vote on it tonight.
Well.
Make a motion to amend on the floor. That feels, that doesn't feel necessary.
Right.
Since we're not committed to spend it.
Right.
Yeah, it does give us time. We don't, we're not bound to it. It also feels funny that we would vote no just because of this. I think it'd be more of the like, let's have the discussion type, why we want to spend it and then separately vote just in general.
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe like I'm feeling better and I, I'm sure this is what you've been thinking since you put it in there. Cause I understand your, you under, you understand the pickle. But, um, but like viewing it unfortunately is not, it looks like it's an addition. It is an addition. But in reality, it's going to have to be a trade off if we're trying to maintain our budget.
I'm looking at revolving, I'm looking at revolving funds. That is an interesting idea. We do have funding there that we could draw from. It is not earmarked for future years. We took, we didn't take more from it this year than we have in the past. There's like, just looking at preschool, there's four hundred thousand in it. We wouldn't want to take that to zero, but like that covers us for the, in general. It would, it would get us all, but like still, I think some kind of compliment. In general, it would, it would get us all, but like, still, I think some kind of compliment, compliment to that. So, yeah, I mean, there's a risk if numbers go down, but it gives us some cushion to move forward. I, I, in similar, I feel better knowing that we've got some options like that and thought about that before. I still think we need to continue to discuss it, but I feel like at least comfortable from, that we'd be covered from a funding perspective. I agree with the, the need. It was, how do we cover it?
And the, the school committee is currently being asked, or you're voting on the entire capital plan, so we're going to vote no on the entire capital plan because of...
I don't think that was suggested.
No, 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 we were just saying because it...
Well, that's, I was out of the room, so I'm just, okay.
We wanted to make sure we discussed that because it was in it as part of our discussion for this article.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'm already feeling better.
Good. Talking it out. Talking it out.
I know it's come up, but I feel like I just got more detailed answers, so, um, I believe there was already a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, that was very worthy. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so, six-zero, and it passes.
I move to support Article fourteen, borrowing for water plant replacement.
Second.
By Sasha, second by Haley. Further discussion? All in favor? Six-zero, passes.
We're doing fifteen, yeah.
Is this the one we're voting on?
We're not voting on fifteen.
Of all, yeah, yeah.
I move to support Article fifteen, debt exclusion for fire truck.
Second.
Move by Sasha, second by Haley. Further discussion? All in favor? Six-zero, passes.
Fire trucks have gotten expensive, huh?
I move to support Article sixteen, borrowing for energy efficiency savings and improvements, new Naresco.
Second.
Move by Sasha, second by Jenny. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Zero, passes. We are skipping seventeen, and we already did eighteen. All right, next up is nineteen.
Getting there.
Wait, where is this?
Oh, we're voting, we're doing nineteen? We said we were. I move to support Article nineteen, citizen vote of no confidence in town manager.
What? The, the, you have to, we don't know how we're voting, yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
But you, you, the motion is to support, and then we can vote whatever to support or not.
It's very confusing.
Move by Sasha, second by Jen. Further discussion?
Uh, just one question, this, he resigned, right? So, is it still like a valid article, or is it just null and void?
It's still on the warrant.
On the warrant.
Okay.
And he'll be here.
Gotcha.
Yep. I'll just say that, I don't know if all of you watched the Select Board and Finance Committee meetings. I think it was very good discussion about the role of town meeting and the role of the Select Board in the evaluation of the town manager. Further discussion?
So, I'm confused. Why do we, now we're going to vote?
The motion has to be, or the motion to, has to be to support in the positive. So, it has to read, it always has to start with, I support this.
I see.
If you don't agree with it, you would...
You don't say I motioned to not, okay, yeah, yeah, all right.
Because it gets confusing, so it always has to be in the positive.
It was like, okay.
All right. Is there any further discussion on how we're, like, the mechanics of voting? Or, we are, we did discuss voting, yes.
Oh, I thought you said we'd wait to see what they, okay.
And I, I think the, in, the intention was, or the discussion amongst the other boards, too, was like, if, if this became a precedent that in ip switch, this was how we were going to treat, you know, employees or officials.
Can you speak up just a little? Sorry.
Does, would this, you know, citizens petition be viewed as a precedent for how we treat officials in town? So, we have officials in town, so, you know. Okay. Uh, wait, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Now I get it.
Okay.
Now I get it.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, the motion fails, zero-six. All right, Article twenty.
Okay.
Just before we get to Article twenty, I did share a link to report from the MSBA. At the time where they were considering removing incentive points, and so incentive points were you'd get an extra percentage, or you'd get additional funding if you were to move forward with model school. They removed that. At the time, they requested information about the model schools. That is a link that I sent you on the MSBA site. If you looked at it, or if you have it up now, on page fourteen, they specifically look at model versus non-model total construction cost. There's a couple of different variations, although this one was the most helpful and most poignant. So, specifically to the citizens petition, requests the MSBA to look at the model versus non-model cost, which is literally what's in this document. It's a little hard because of some of the, the dots in there, and you have to connect it back to the schools. What this shows is that, on average, if you look in the middle, take out the outliers, model schools are six percent less than non-model schools. That's an average. There are non-model schools on here that are less expensive than model schools. There are outliers all over the place, but on average, it's six percent.
So, I looked at the document. Six percent is your number?
No, that's the number from, when they look at the construction cost, and they do it by square foot. So, if you have a hundred thousand versus two-hundred thousand square foot building, they normalized, or they just looked at construction cost per square foot. So, these are their numbers.
But did they do the math to get the six percent?
Oh, I'm doing the ma, I, using the dollar amounts here, I'm reading that as six percent.
Okay, so that's your interpretation?
Yes.
I just want to clarify that that wasn't specifically called out from them. Okay. Because they didn't give a number. You're saying it might be six percent. I believe the petitioner...
The language that they use... Give me one second. The language they use is in general, in general, on average, model school projects have bid at or under non-model schools.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm reading from the report, and then what they do specifically point out is change orders. They show, they show specific numbers there. The intention is because it's a model school, you know what it looks like. We've, they've built it before. And so, change order for, change orders for model schools are three percent. Change orders for non-model schools are four-point-four-five percent. So, one-point-four-five percent difference between those two. Those numbers they do provide, I'm reading from the report.
I'm just, like, confused, because don't we have to look at model schools anyway as part of the MSBA process? So, if this was approved, we would have to look at model schools. If this failed, we would still have to look at model schools. Am I missing something?
You are not. We, we intend to. It is a normal part of the process. And the request for, to evaluate has already been done and has been published and is available on the MSBA's website.
So, theoretically, just saying, speaking theoreticals here, if we just went with the flow and said, sure, we can do this cost efficiency thing, because we'd be doing it anyway, it might just cause less strife and contention at town meeting. Or if we just go with the Select Board, I just don't want there to be a big debate and a big clash at town meeting like there has been in the past when the topic of schools has come up. That's just, I mean, because we're going to do it either way. Either if it gets approved, we're going to do it. If it fails, we're still going to have to look at model schools.
The concern that was raised here and with Finance Committee and the Select Board is that the citizens petition specifically references small and large schools, which everyone is interpreting as an intention to, is the intention to build two schools.
But wouldn't we have to look at different sites for small and large schools anyway? Or do you go into MSBA saying we want one, one consolidated school? Or do you go to the MSBA and say, look, this is the land we have. We have Bylock Park. We have this site. We have Winthrop. We have Doian. We have whatever.
Actually, all the boards have taken the position about one school at the Doian site.
Oh, they have, okay. Well, no, I know, but I mean, when you walk into MSBA, like, do you, don't they look at every, all options? Or do they say, what do you want to do, and then we'll work on that?
All options is a lot of options, right? Do we want to put another story on this building and call it a [inaudible]?
That's what I mean. That's why I didn't...
But, uh, there will, they have to look at renovating. And then, I'm, I don't know this. I think it'll be a collaboration between the MSBA and the School Building Committee, what else they evaluate.
Yeah, I just...
It was important, like, seven years ago, they evaluated every potential option.
Right.
So, we're not going into this with a blank piece of paper. I think that's important, too, here.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, no, they're good questions, because this is important context for...
Because this is going to set us up for years in the future, yeah.
We know a lot of this, and I think that's a little, the concern is reading between the lines. There's ulterior, ulterior motives.
I guess, in my opinion, having grown up through the experience, I would rather have all options looked at, even if it is smaller schools looked at, to definitively prove, like, this is not an option. Like, there is no place that one, that two schools could go into ip switch. Like, it's just not possible, or whatever. If it somehow miraculously works out, it is possible. But I would rather it looked at, so it's not like a resenting cycle, and so it doesn't fail at a town meeting six years, or whenever we ask for the money, so it doesn't fail at a town meeting saying you didn't look at all options. But that's just my...
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's required by the process with the MSBA.
Right, I, I know, but I know the concern with this was that it looks at like the small schools, and that means two schools, and I would rather we look at that and we can definitively rule it out. That way, at town meeting, it doesn't fail to vote again because there is accusations that we did not investigate them.
The groups that are lobbying in town for two schools, this is coded language for we'll build two schools.
Right.
This is not about truly examining all options, and I think that's an important distinction here.
Okay.
And I think we need to take this as for face value, and I can understand that if you, if people think that, but there is people that are looking for what the town can handle financially. And this is information that, if it turns out that it's one consolidated schools, I've said, but there's people asking for this information, and they can. And why wouldn't we provide the public information that we can just because we don't like their...
No, no, I do. That's why, that's why I shared this. This is the information that's been requested, yeah.
Okay, so, so, okay, good.
I think, kind of answering both of your questions, when we begin working with the MSBA, there will not be a, let's look at a two-school plan. The MSBA partners with you to build one school.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
They won't say, let's do this this year, and then five years, we'll work with you to do that. It's, that is the school that, whatever you decide to work on, does that. So, that's, again, a lot of this we're doing. There's some wording that's confusing. I think Sasha brings up some good points. I do, I am concerned about the initial article wording. But when I look at the summary, that is newer language since being counting. I don't see anything, I, I'm in agreement with that. So, obviously, we can continue to discuss this, but this is kind of the article I had in mind when I shared that town council, actually, let me back up for a second. Despite the headlines, the Select Board and the Finance Committee came down with the same, pretty much identical discussion on this warrant article. They just handled it differently. Select Board said, we're taking it at face value, and we're not supporting it. Finance Committee said, we will support it if you don't include language about small and large schools. And the petitioner at that meeting said, I believe that was his intention for the motion, and we don't have the motion here.
His intention was to change the language at town meeting?
Not to change it. There's, there's the article, there's the summary, and then there's the motion. You vote on the motion at town meeting, so...
He said he would consider that. It was under consideration.
Changing the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm going to jump ahead and say that I feel like I, I have a lot, I have some concerns. I don't find anything I disagree with in the summary, but for me, it would be helpful to hear the motion, to understand what exactly is being asked at town meeting.
Was that Radham?
That would be where I land.
I'm just, I'm really worried that if we don't look at small schools, that there will be, there is a possibility at town meeting, when we seek approval from the town to borrow money to pay for new elementary school, whatever it might be, it gets rejected and it fails again. And that puts us on a track, that sets us years and years behind. And I don't know, I don't think our elementary schools can handle that without significant investment. And that's my only, I, like, I'm worried about that. I'm worried that if we don't look at small schools and we don't definitively rule them out, there's a possibility it fails again.
That's not what this is asking, though.
You said it looks at the small schools.
This is asking specifically about looking at small model schools that fit both sites, and that's not part of...
I think it should be looked at, because if it doesn't, then in five years, they're going to say, all the committees, what...
I hear what you're saying, but we're past that.
So, so I, I'd like to say something about this. So, first of all, it's non-binding. Second of all, I think the problem with using the word "small," "custom-designed" is that small, who's defining small? That, that's a tough one. If, if providing a detailed written cost analysis comparing schools of different sizes, does even a consolidated school in the Doian property, I think there's going to be, have to be an analysis of what size. I think if that was worded differently, although this is non-binding, small means different things to different people. And you all know where I stand on that, but I feel like it means different things to different people, and I understand the why FinCom doesn't want that. So, tell me what the petitioner said again. He said he would be open to changing it in the motion? Or is he going to maybe amend it?
It wouldn't be, we, like, for any of the articles, you, you make a motion within the four corners of the article, I believe I'm saying that right? And that's what the vote is on. So, I feel without that language, well, I, if it is in the spirit of the summary, I would support that, but I personally am uncomfortable opining without knowing what that motion is going to read like.
I agree with that. I feel the same way.
So would I. I think I'd rather know exactly what that motion's going to say before I weigh in on that.
I feel that, I don't even know where I go, um, that, as Charlie was saying, that without looking at the other options, you know, and again, maybe not small, but a variety of sizes, where if the, you know, the most feasible is what, you know, is, is being believed to be true, then that would be the one consolidated school. But why not just, people are, all these people are going to be paying for it. They want more information. They want information to say, okay, I need to know what else is out there before I can say yes to this amount of money that's going to be asked of me in a few years. So, you know, if, if there's confidence that the, you know, one total combined consolidated school is the most feasible, that will show itself. So, if we have these other things that we're looking at, then people will be satisfied. They heard me. I'm going to be, my taxes are going to go up. I want to know I'm heard. I want to know that I've, have taken me seriously and, and got some information for me. And even if it comes back as the fully consolidated school, okay, but they, people feel heard.
I don't disagree with you. I don't, I think that's related, but a little different to what this is, could be asking. And that is to specifically look at model, like, model schools. I don't even know what mechanism we would have with or without the MSBA to... I don't even know who this is asking to do that work, who's going to look at what model schools fit the Winthrop and Doian site. I just think there's a lot of intricacies in this that are a little tricky, but I think we will get more information when we're actually in feasibility and absolutely look at and answer, look at the, what you raised and answer those questions, is my sense.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say that what's remaining here is a focus on cost efficiency, which is what you're talking about, right? So, if that language, specific language, that doesn't leave anybody opining on size, and what we're saying is we'll be looking at cost efficiencies, as we've already said, I mean, that's stated in our goals, that's stated in the documents from the workshop, that's stated in the document presented at tri-board, that that is... that's stated in the document presented at tri-board, that that is, that is our charge, and that's what we plan to do. So, you know, removing that language, I would still support it to Charlie's point, because it's like, why do we need to stir up a big to-do about this? But ultimately, what's left here is what we're gonna do anyways. And that's outlined by the MSBA, and that's outlined in our goals. So we will be doing a cost analysis, and everyone who's charged with this will, that's inherent in the process. So it's sort of superfluous at that point.
But do people know that? Like, do, I'm worried that people who really want two schools will not know that we did that as part of the process. That's one of my worries. And then if we don't say, yes, we're gonna look at it, because we're gonna be looking at it anyway, when it comes time to vote for it, they're gonna be like, you never looked at this. And you can say, yes, we did. I feel like this would just be reaffirming that, yes, we are gonna look at it. Of course, we're gonna look at it, even though it probably won't happen, we're still gonna look at it.
If people cared to know that information, it will be readily available. There will be an incredible amount of open meetings and documentation that will be provided and publicly available. Whether people choose or not to engage, attend meetings, and be informed will be up to them. But that information will be available to them.
For those people who don't care and don't wanna look at the information, still have the same equal vote at town meeting. It's insane that a small meeting can dictate the whole borrowing, but those small people, I mean, if this, if this article would convince, you know, five people, or whatever have you, to vote in favor of whatever we end up doing instead of voting against it, that in itself could allow one school to go forward instead of having to delay this whole process by years again.
I haven't heard yet, and we haven't voted, but that, I'm not getting sense anybody is adamantly opposed to this article. It's that we just don't know exactly what's gonna be asked of town meeting.
Radham.
I don't know that we need to officially vote, but is there a general comfort with going to Radham with this?
Thumbs up to Radham.
Yeah.
We could sit here talking about it all night.
Yeah.
We have a thumbs, I mean, I'm thumbs up. If there's a thumbs down, does that kill Radham?
I don't think so.
Is it a majority?
I think if we're not comfortable on voting, then we wouldn't have a quorum to the vote if you had to abstain, so.
I would like to know what's being said, just, it may not change anything, but.
I'm okay with the language as it's written.
Are you okay with the language as it's written? What do you think about this?
You know, it, it, it's kind of all been said. I don't love the optics of us saying that we're against cost efficiency, even though we're not saying that. I don't also, I don't think we're gonna be pigeonholed into anything, based on what I've heard. But I think it's also, I would really just like to know kind of how Chris intends this to be. And I think that will come out in his motion. And he's a very honest guy, and I, I trust him implicitly, you know. But at the same time, I think words matter, and we should know what those words are.
I mean, the other thing that came up at Bean counting is just the unity around, between the boards on this. And so I think having fragmentation there doesn't set great precedent for us in the process. And given that the other two boards, obviously their vote was slightly different, but ultimately, they're saying the same thing. So I think it's important for us all to be aligned. I definitely am in support of Radham, based on what the motion actually says.
All right. So where are Radham? Great. Speaker assignments. So, school budget.
Sorry.
Oh, me? Just kidding.
Kate said she wanted to do all of these.
I know. But you're not here.
I'd be supportive of that. Yeah, I'm happy to do school budget.
Okay.
Number four.
Yep. Essex Tech budget?
I've done it a couple times.
You're getting really good at it.
All right, it's you.
And resume, probably.
Transfer to education stabilization.
I can do that one, too.
Annual capital, it's, it's interesting, because it listed us and the Select Board. I don't recall if we've had to do it in the past.
I don't think we've ever said a word about it.
Yeah.
I think it's just a capital plan.
I, I can represent it if questions come, but we don't usually.
Especially where we're, I mean, was that Select Board?
Yeah, we have a Select Board member in the audience that said the Select Board does it.
Got it. Okay, so I think, you know, we're not presenting some of the articles. I think in the past, we signaled to the town moderator that we wanna say a little bit more. We have that opportunity. I believe Kate is interested, if she has the opportunity, to speak to the Naresco project, because she's our climate resiliency member. Follow up with her and Jim to kind of understand expectations. But does anybody have feelings on that?
She's an appropriate person if that's, comes up.
At fall town meeting, we did speak to the 3A.
I'll speak in opposition, but.
Are there anybody who'd like to speak for it?
Why would we just speak to it at all?
You spoke to it at fall.
No, I know, why would we, why would we speak to it at all?
Why would we?
Yeah.
Wanted to again.
Just saying, if we, I don't know, I kind of need to figure out what's gonna be expected of us. But I do recall you spoke to it in the fall.
Yeah, no, I'm suggesting we don't speak to this one, like the other ones.
Okay.
Else to speak at the opposition?
I wanna.
Her husband was on the 3A task committee, wasn't she?
Yeah, she doesn't wish to speak to it.
She doesn't, okay.
Yeah. I just, I wanna understand from Jim, if we don't plan to speak, if it's not our article, and we don't plan to speak in favor of it, and there's only an opposing position, what, how he would handle that.
I hope he would, just, because otherwise, that's just, the decision to not speak for, silence is the against, you know? But yeah, ask him, he, he knows what the process is, but.
It's not our, our, I don't know.
Yeah.
You spoke to it as a private citizen last time, didn't you, though?
Yeah.
Yes, both.
Or both, okay.
Stop talking. Then I just talked about the wrong thing. I was like, whatever.
If, I'm happy to, if, I don't feel it's necessary, based on Jim's feedback. If he wants to, I can speak to it again.
Okay. Thanks, Sasha. And then, Article 20, just where it's about the schools. Do we want to give a deeper answer than whatever it is we come up with at town meeting? I would think it.
We're gonna Radham, I think, let's just, let's also decide that there.
Well, I kind of want somebody to be prepared with talking points.
I'd be happy to take it.
Okay, I think, so I would just be prepared for informational things, since we haven't taken a position. But, base information we have, and then we can tweak it after we take a position on it, okay? Anything else anybody wishes to speak to? Great. Onto the new Naresco letter. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at that? Is there any questions, recommendations? Seeing and hearing none? Looks good. We did, we reviewed it at, Kate wrote of the original, then we reviewed it at communications. I made a couple, like, accepted some changes today. Sasha and Haley, are you still working? It's okay if you are. I just can't tell.
I read, I looked earlier. Got it, thank you.
I'm seeing a couple of small typos. I'm adjusting now, but I'm good.
Oh, so, sorry. Yes, I did read that. Yep. Yep, looks good. I support that.
All right, so we'll send that out tonight or tomorrow. All right, next up, elementary school building project.
Oh, thanks, Carl. Thanks for staying.
Elementary projects working group update.
Yes, when we met last, we discussed material that would be helpful to share with the public ahead of the process with MSBA formally beginning in July. There are two documents, beginning with 10C. The first one is guiding principles. This is adapted from what we used in the workshop. The intention, we'd previously talked about this as talking points, but the idea is it's key messages from the school committee, also for us to be able to share with the other boards. They have been incredibly supportive and are looking to continue to be so. And so I thought this would be helpful, the committee prepared these, subcommittee prepared these, as what we are now referring to as guiding principles. The intention behind it is to focus on like, what are the key things we're talking about? We're, we're not leading with what color do we paint the hallways? We're not leading with what do we do in the cafeteria. We focus on, number one, education plans, top priority, which I think is important, because lots of the other conversations we've had here, other boards. This gets skipped over so quickly, and so I think it's important to reinforce it. The second is addressing current challenges. We actually talked about some of those tonight. So it's education plan in general, but also we are not meeting the needs of our students, our teachers, administrators in the current building. So making sure that those are addressed very specifically above and beyond the education plan, or in conjunction with the education plan is probably more accurate. There are just financial responsibility. This is one we've been talking about, just in, since we've been talking about a project. Community and environmental benefits. This is fit with the culture and the interests of Ipswich, and then also certainly the sustainability aspects of it, which also perfectly fits with the, our green initiative and the culture of Ipswich. And then the last one is open and transparent process. Reinforces what we've been doing in our newsletters every single month regularly, and always talking about what's going on with it, where you can find more information, how to learn more, how to get, how to ask questions, and so reinforcing it that way. I think also being really intentional of putting it on paper and publishing it is part of what we wanted to do as well, and even just what that signals to the town. That was a lot. We had now time to read through it. Any questions, comments, suggestions, or edits to it?
Clear. It's nice and clear.
And the second document that's there.
I have, I have quite a few.
Oh, great.
Got myself my water.
They're not like huge, but I don't know, I'm happy to go over them now, or, and I don't know how quickly you wanna give them up. Like, do you wanna bring it to communications, or how, or do you want me to just?
Why don't you make notes in it, and then if it's, if they're small things, we incorporate it. If there are things we need to discuss, we'll bring it to a subcommittee. We're not urgently publishing, but we do want, we do intend to publish it on the website by the end of the month.
Okay. All right.
Can I just go through it now?
Let, okay, let me go through it, and then you can, okay, I would delete the whole first paragraph.
Okay.
I just think it's, it's wordy, and it talks about comparing to other schools, and that only actually happens once in the, in the rest of the content.
Yep, preamble is gone. You're gonna do it?
Oh, no, I just wanted to co-sign.
It'll be in the history. In, okay, number one looks fine, number two. Oh.
I'm gonna take out that Swampscott example. I forgot why I added that in there. I think we had that as like notes, and incorrectly made it into this.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting, but just not.
My comments, actually.
Under our things.
Well, I actually didn't mind it if you take out Swampscott, but then, like, take out the thing about Swampscott. But I would just word it more in the positive, instead of using a word like limiting, like, education, the environment could be enhanced.
Good, good call. Yep, good call.
And you can, I can send you this, so you have it and can fix it later, but I'll just say it out loud so everybody can hear. You have the word, like, accessibility concerns in the first bullet, and I just don't, like, is that about, like, ADA compliance?
Yeah.
What specifically is that?
We revised that in the documents going in the budget book. I'll, I did not make the same updates here. I'll do that.
Okay. I don't disagree with it. I just don't know what it's specifying.
Yeah, it can be misinterpreted.
I, I don't, this would be, I don't know if this would be a separate bullet, and I don't know if she's anything, but maybe under number two, something about timing, like incorporating how we have current challenges, and like, time is of the essence. And not, literally don't say that, but I would like, like, the timeline to, for me, at least, that's.
Something about urgency?
Yes, the urgency. Thank you. That's.
Got it.
In number three, you could literally, where you have MSBA partnership, I would just copy the MSBA's mission statement, which is, it's like the first thing on their website. But it literally says that they support the design and construction of cost-effective public school facilities. So I do wanna call that out, because.
Yeah, it's good.
Like, we just talked about, it's literally what they do. They look at cost efficiency, amongst other things. Okay, the second bullet, I think we're anticipating some cost savings. I don't wanna get too far ahead of us. Like, the lower operational costs, without fully investigating that and quantifying it. I, it makes, I wouldn't wanna put that in there so specifically. Like, maintenance costs, yes, I would imagine, we wouldn't have to fixing a newer building as often as older buildings, but. Right here. We're almost done. You could tie, like, number four to the, like, Ipswich being a green community, and our sustainability policy or goals. And then, the last one in number five, it is warm.
It's better than cold. No, it is fine. I understand.
I would change the bullet in number five to be, we expect the school committee and school building committee to be committed to. I'll send it to you, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll send you literally what I said, but just so you can pop it in. All right, that's it. That wasn't that bad. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, can you just say again why you don't like the first paragraph? I'm not challenging you. I just wonder.
I just didn't think it had much value add, and then it talked about, like, looking at different schools, but then it didn't actually link that, other than the one reference to Swampscott. But then we took that out, too. So just, is it, if you wanna keep some of it, I'm not opposed. Or, or you could take some language from, like, the position we took, like, the letter we wrote, if you wanna kind of give a summary there.
That last sentence of the first paragraph I like, because it kind of summarizes what's underneath it.
Yeah.
But change, I mean, it talks about Ipswich community interim transparency, foster and collective support.
That's all very good feedback. Anything else?
Looks good.
Thank you.
The second document, also that begins with 10C, is the project timing, process timing, excuse me. It is lifted and adapted from the MSBA. So the visual that's there actually comes from their website, all the details for each of the phases. The link is right there at the top for us, but for everybody. And then there's a short description of each of the key steps throughout. Again, all adapted from the website, and shortened from the website. There's a lot to read to there, but I thought this was helpful. Even when I think about it in some of our tri-board meetings, questions about or confusion, distinctions between eligibility period, feasibility study, sometimes get used interchangeably. They're two distinct things. Overall, timing, I think, has been particularly helpful for everybody to see overall, like, in general, and then specific phases. And so just as a one-pager for us, for the boards, the community, we thought it would be helpful. And then including the link, we were very intentional about. And then, including the link, we were very intentional about, because there's copious amounts of detail on the MSB website, we didn't want to recreate that, we just wanted to point people to it. But a one, literally a one-pager would be helpful. Thoughts?
This is super quick, I love it, but in number one, you have begins July 1st, 2025, so I did out the math, because obviously there's a lot of variability with each phase, but for number six, it gets you at nearest to fall of 2030, and farthest of fall of 2033. I don't know if that's helpful, because we keep talking about, is it five years, is it seven years?
We did talk about having like the years on there, but because they were so, like, is that what you're saying, like, give an idea of like how many years it's going to go in the end, because there's so much variability between the 12 months versus the 24 months.
I don't, I, I think this document is from MSBA, and those are the timeframes that are given, is that, is that correct? So I don't think it's up to us to decide, oh, we're going to do this in one year, or in year three, I think this is what the document is.
I didn't say, I, if we're saying it starts in July of 2025, and I say, okay, at quickest, we're going to do 270 plus 12 plus 6 plus 12 plus 24 plus 6, we get to fall of 2030. Or if we go like on the
Right, on the outside, yeah.
Yeah, then you get to fall of 2033.
So both number one and number six have a range.
Range, yeah.
You start at July 1st, 2025.
But closeout happens, closeout happens after the building is open, I believe.
Yeah, that's fine, but I still think it's a good end goal to know.
Yeah.
It's exciting to put
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point.
So, double check my math, but I came out with fall of 2030 and fall of 2033 as the soonest and farthest for the closeout.
That you'd be adding that to bullet six, as a range.
Double check it.
You're suggesting including those dates in here?
At the bottom.
Because you did in the first. Number one has July, it had July 1st, but begins July 2025. You use every date range or length of time in the parentheses for each one, you come up with a teal-colored date range in number six. Fall 2030 to fall 2033. You don't like that idea?
Why? It's literally their math, just applying it to July 1st. Talk it out, talk it out?
Yeah. What are you thinking?
I'm uncomfortable if that's publishing anything on paper like that, it's going on our website.
We anticipated?
We've said it out loud a million times, I haven't written it down, it feels different.
Well, what are the, what are the caveats to, or potential barriers to that being true?
Vote fails.
Well, right, but if that happened, then all bets are off anyways, right? So
Wouldn't, we wouldn't be
No, we'd just go right to the next.
I don't know, I looked at this and that's, I saw it and I started counting.
I don't mean all bets are off, I mean related to how this would then be this would not be accurate anymore.
If it was changed.
We timelines it still.
But it wouldn't be based on July 1st, because we'd be watching the whole process, so.
Is everybody else comfortable with it, am I just being too conservative?
Yeah, I mean, it does make it exciting.
I think it's good to talk it out, I
Right.
Talk it out.
I'm, I'm not comfortable with putting that in there, I think it's dangerous, I mean, these are guidelines and estimates, so, you know, can feasible, does feasibility, I'll just use feasibility as a as an example. Does feasibility have to take 12 months? What if, because we don't know. Like, we, you know, is, or schematic design, depending on what we're doing, does it have to take six months to get through that process? We don't, we don't know that. The whole thing is, is very variable.
Yeah. And three years is a big range, so it's like, is that even helpful maybe to say?
The upside of including it.
Yeah, I think it is a it is a little bit of minutia. I go, it is kind of exciting when I see it, because it's an endpoint. But
It makes people uncomfortable, I'd say, not, not take it out.
Right, if it makes people uncomfortable and
I was going to use the construction example, like, I wouldn't want to lovely that they have that in there, anyone's ever done construction around their house. It's also, some of these are like, this is, this was meant to be a little bit like helpful directional, it's not like the only thing we're ever going to publish, and so as we move forward, we will have timelines and things, so I think maybe that would be my concession is, until I feel comfortable with it here, we're going to know so much more in the next few months, and then next few months after that, we can start to.
Anybody can do that math and do it in their head, and not see it published on a sheet if they want.
And people who are very excited and interested are going to do the math themselves.
Right.
That number.
Yep.
Yep. Anything else in here?
I was just going to say, can we, I mean, maybe it doesn't matter, Laura, in terms of formatting, to try to get it on one page?
Header, yeah, I was just kind of looking at that, yes.
I'll play with it. No, I'm a formatting psycho, so let's not get started.
Yeah, it was, I don't know what happened to it, maybe, maybe there's an extra line.
So next steps, I think the only, the other things that are not included here, where we were talking about Laura's response in inquiring about how we actually get this on the website, was to let her know, and she will help with that, we need to let her know where, which presumably would be in the tab for the elementary building project, so the other thing that we talked about was do, we want everything that's there to, for the previous project to exist, can we move those to like an archive page, is it good to keep it there for reference, and then also are there supplemental things we want to add for 2025, like the official letter of acceptance from the MSBA, so I don't know, next steps if we how we can get that all together collated and passed across to Laura.
We're going to have another meeting together, let's do that.
And then how all of that information gels with the school building committee, which is one who's going to be taking over all of this.
Right, yeah, this is intended just as a
Presumably they'll have their, I mean, when you look at every other district, they have their own website and all of that, so this is us just getting ahead, trying to be, again, in the spirit of being transparent and communicating, we're getting ahead of that as much as we can.
We'll get a meeting together, but questions or thoughts on posting this to website?
I'm supportive. Did you need more from us, or, like, it sounds like you're thinking of
These were the two documents, and then what Haley brought up about getting it posted.
I mean, I would, I think it, for the time being, it is still relevant to have the last project documents available.
Thank you.
But, yeah, how, like, if we can streamline it, make different buckets on the webpage, sort of getting it to a good digestible place.
Laura, how much time do you need to be able to add something like that?
Not much time, just send me whatever you want, and just tell me where you want it, and
Okay. Great, thank you.
That's all that I had, I guess, there's anything else, anyone has questions about suggestions? No, okay. Thanks.
Right.
Thank you, that looks very good.
Excited? Alright, Jenny's going to prom. Alright, we're on to end of year event.
So, it was interesting, I brought these up, we brought this up at our admin team meeting last week, just and, you know, we had a, we had an interesting conversation, there's, there's, like, graduation is probably the most important one for the school committee to know about and let the administration know that you're going to be in attendance, so that you have, you have reserved seating. But any of these other ones is more of a feel-good thing for the school committee, it's, they're not it's not required. It's for, right, exactly, it's for you folks, not, not them. You know, the, there was a comment, you know, that the school, that the students that are going through the line at the reception for the prom, they're like, who are those people?
I got a few of those looks last year.
It was, the whole thing was awkward, and it was hysterical, I have thoughts on how we can change it up a little bit.
I think firstly, you should walk in, and like confetti cannons go off, and like, and from the school committee, we have, drumroll.
We get announced and walk through.
Oh, do you like, do this, and then go through?
Okay, well, that's a good perspective, so I see that certain, so what is this signaling here in this sheet that says school committee attendance? Is that historical attendance, we're recommended at, welcome at, like, what, what are the checkboxes indicating?
This is more, if you were going to go to any of them, these might be some highlights that you wouldn't want to do.
Okay. Alright, well
And more standard that people have
Okay. Alright, you want to go down them one at a time, or does anybody want to shout out anything they plan to be attending?
Love to go to the senior prom.
Okay.
Really?
Jenny's going to see, are you typing in Laura, or do you want me to type?
See you there.
We had two people there last time.
I'd like to go to junior prom.
See you there.
Do we have a meeting that night? Well, but it's just, you just go for the
The promenade, yeah. Edwin going to one, and Charlie going to the other, that's a good idea, I should do that.
Edwin and Charlie.
When I was a freshman, I convinced a senior that we were two different people.
Alright.
Love that story.
Great, anybody else have anything they want to call out off the bat?
What is bridge presentation?
I don't know.
So our problem, I, I think some parents have gone in the past if they had senior students that were on, that did the bridge program, the bridge program is an internship program that runs the last quarter of the school year for seniors, and as, at the end of that, the stu, as part of their learning, the students all have to do a presentation, and so there's a presentation night, it's, it's really pretty cool, because you get to see what they, what their internship was, what they learned. They demonstrate different things, there was, there was one young man that sticks out last year, who did an electrical internship with a local electrician company, and they actually bought him his first set of tools, and was going to continue on working with them after graduation, I mean, that, talk about real life learning and opportunities. So they do some, some pretty cool stuff, there was another young lady who did an internship out on the, on the harbor with the, with the police and marine patrol, which is pretty neat, so, I mean, those are just a couple of examples, other kids work in doctors' offices, lawyers' offices, on some of the farms. So it's, it's a pretty interesting night, so a lot of fun, a lot of positive energy.
Sounds great, I would go when I'm working that evening, is anybody available and interested?
Which one? The Specifically attended because you said other parents, like, if you, versus like, we should have somebody there regardless of if.
If you want, like I said, I, I think it's, you know, there's no it's not a formal event where if you walk in, you're going to be introduced as, you know, the school committee is here, any kind of, you know, like that, but it's just a nice event to attend if you can, and we don't even have to have signups because of that, I suppose.
Right.
I, I think the only event that really needs a sign up is eighth grade graduation or the moving on ceremony, because the school committee member speaks. And then graduation, who's going, and then the high school needs to know if school committee members will be attending graduation, because they reserve seats for you, and they want to send you an formal invitation. Everything else is, you don't have a formal obligation to be there, it's just a nice to check out as a school.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Just graduation and grade eight is really where you need to go.
Okay.
Do graduation.
Yeah.
I, um
I'll do graduation as well.
For the past two years, I've been the speaker at the eighth grade moving on ceremony, I kind of like it. I have an eighth grader, she's going to have to give me permission to be there, but yeah, I'll be that speaker.
I support that.
I didn't one of the years Kate was going to do it, but couldn't because, was it her daughter was
Yeah, but Kate preferred not to do it, so I said, I'll do it, and that was my first year, and then I kind of like it, it's, it's a fun one.
Yeah.
I give advice, I pull some freshmen and say, this is what last year's eighth graders said you should look out for, so.
That's fine, good.
Then you're the, you're my pick.
Right, alright, so we got Jen for that, Alby at graduation, Matt, Sasha.
Um, I'll go, I'm going to go to graduation or something.
It's hot. Bring a fan.
Great, bring it.
Parasol.
Alright, and then, I mean, if you guys want to go to prom, I support you going to prom.
It'll be a blast.
Alright, well then that settles.
Great.
Other comments? Alright. Okay, next, new business.
What is moving up day, sorry, is that like?
For the fifth grade?
No, because there's a different, there's moving up, and then there's moving on.
I believe, am I wrong, or do they come to the middle school?
Moving up is they come visit the middle school, moving on is their graduation.
Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, right?
Right.
Alright, consent agenda. We leave the Ipswich School Committee to accept meeting minutes from April 3rd, 2025. Check in the amount of $1,900 to be used for the high school robotics trip to be deposited into the robotics gift account, a check in the amount of $1,500 from Nancy and George Jewel to be used for the high school robotics trip to be deposited into the robotics gift account, and a check in the amount of $2,910 from the IAF to be used for the high school robotics team to be deposited into the robotics gift account.
So moved.
Jenny?
Second.
Matt, further discussion, all in favor? Zero, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Jenny, second by Matt, all in favor? Alright, so we are adjourned at 10:11.